Hello, hello everyone, welcome. Today is March 21st, the time is 6:01, and you are now in the regular meeting of the Leander City Council. We're going to ask Jeff Seiler to do our invocation, and if you'll remain standing for the pledges of allegiance, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Lord, thank you so much for this day, thank you for the beautiful weather we have. Lord, just be here with us tonight to help us make decisions and to help us to remember that we're making decisions that affect residents here in our city, Lord, and be with all of us that are running for elected office, Lord, just wrap your arms around us, protect us from some of those that don't speak differently, Lord, and just be with everybody that's running, be with this community, and bless this city always, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag?
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you very much. Ms. Crabtree, if we could get a roll call.
Councilmember Andrea Navarrete.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Michelle Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Shannon Shepherd.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Sederquist.
Here.
Councilmember Jeff Seiler.
Here.
Councilmember Marcy Cannon.
Here.
Mayor Troy Hill.
Here.
We do have a quorum, we can do business. At this time, we're going to go to citizen comments. I do have one person signed up to speak, Ms. Karen Thompson.
Karen Thompson, 11327, Hero Way West. Tonight, I want to bring a couple of things to you. This is a graphic that shows Old Town is in the gray. That's our perimeters for Old Town section. This is the Davis House that we've all been talking about lately, and it's right there in the center of Old Town, and its use in the future will have to be determined. But this message I've got tonight is to talk about Old Town, because all of Old Town is a commercial. That's what the zoning is right now. So, this is the chamber, this was the Champion House, among other owners, but mostly Champion, and it's now the Chamber of Commerce. It's also owned by the city, as is the Davis House, and this is so useful, of course, a chamber right in the middle of your Old Town and your district, your commercial district, and the chamber is exceedingly imparting. This is across the street, this is a house we call the McBride House, it's owned by the school district. So, it also is not residential, school district is impartent within our Old Town. This is the sign on the Leander School, that because the school burnt down in 1938, WPA was called in and built a new Leander High School in 1939, and we have more school district. Here's the Methodist Church. A lot of what this is leading to is I want you all tonight to think about, if you've ever heard of a Main Street program, these are programs administered by the Texas Historical Commission, and we have Georgetown and Taylor that have done Main Street programs in Williamson County. Next, we have the Presbyterian Church, the oldest church in town. Next to it, the blue building, is the Linebarger House, and next to it is Davis House Two, as opposed to our two-story Davis House that we're trying to save, this is the Davis House with a red roof. Next, across the street, which is also a commercial building, is the old Ringstaff House, and this is a real estate building. Then across the street, we have new construction. So, again, this leads in our Old Town Leander, which would be a Main Street project, here we have one of our newer buildings, architects, that might even help us in the future. Next, we have the bakery, we've talked about how they restored, and believe it or not, that was another Davis House. But we're calling it the bakery, we're not even going with the Davis. This is the Shea, what was Shea's Place, but right there in the middle is the post office that was built in 1950. So, we hope this Main Street project would lend itself immediately to promotion of Shea's Place being rented and used right away. 14th EMS. I almost made it.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Great job, thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to go to recognitions and proclamations. Mayor Pro Tem Stevenson has one, recognizing March as Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month. And Ms. Clausen, if you want to come up, tell us a little bit about it after she gives the proclamation.
Okay. Whereas, this designation will formalize and expand upon the designation 30 years ago of March 1986, as Hemophilia Awareness Month by President Ronald Reagan, and whereas, the Federal Department of Health and Human Services designated March 2016 as National Bleeding Disorders Month, and whereas, these bleeding disorders, which share the inability to form a proper blood clot, are characterized by extended bleeding after injury, surgery, trauma, or menstruation, and can lead to significant morbidity, and can be fatal if not treated effectively, and whereas, many individuals with hemophilia became infected with HIV and hepatitis C in the 1980s due to the contamination of the blood supply and blood products, and whereas, this Awareness Month in Leander will generate greater awareness and understanding of not only hemophilia, but all inheritable bleeding disorders, including von Willebrand disease, which alone impacts an estimated 1% of the U.S. population, or more than 3.2 million individuals, and whereas, this Awareness Month will foster a greater sense of community and shared purpose among individuals with all inheritable bleeding disorders, and whereas, this Awareness Month will elevate awareness of and engagement in the inheritable bleeding disorders journey beyond our community to the general public, enabling the prevention of illness, unnecessary procedures, and disability. Now therefore, I, Troy Hill, Mayor of the City of Leander, Texas, do hereby proclaim March as Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month in the City of Leander, and urge all citizens to support research aimed at finding better treatments and cures for bleeding and clotting disorders, and a greater understanding of the disorders.
Thank you, Mayor Hill, and City Council members. My name is Shelley Clausen, and I am the Chair of the Texas Bleeding Disorders Coalition, but most importantly, I'm the mother of a seven-year-old son with hemophilia, and he's on spring break, so he's not here with me, or he would be. On behalf of about 2,000 Texans, I want to thank you for this proclamation, and for this chance to bring more awareness to our community. Hemophilia and other bleeding disorders affect about 400 births a year in the world, so as rare as this is, there are many patients in our area that this affects, and that this proclamation is helping spread awareness to their communities. Living with a bleeding disorder, there's still a lot of misconceptions at their school, with their friends, with their families, and even with the medical community. So, this is really awesome for our community, and will help spread more awareness. And I just want to let you all know that we hold a walk every year, and this year, it will be October 27th at the Brushy Creek Lake Park, and we'd love to have you all there. Thank you.
Where do we get information on that?
Sure, yeah.
Where would we go?
Oh, you can go to www.lonestarhemophilia.org.
Thank you, and you said it's when?
October 27th.
Thanks.
Thank you.
from this, or has this. She's not suffering right now, but you know.
But I'm glad to see some awareness in our community, so thank you so much for coming out, and thanks for the proclamation.
All right. All right, we're going to move to our staff reports. Mr. Cagle.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. Sales and Use Tax report one more time, and as it pops up, so what we've got, for those that haven't seen this before, while it's very busy, every month, we've got, on January, February, and March, we've got five years of data, then going forward, we've got four. So, if you look at March, we had an outstanding March that was 33.2% above the same period last year, or if we look at a rolling 12-month average, take the past 12 months compared to the previous 12 months, we're up 16.07%. And then, if you want to look at the first four months of the fiscal year, although we start in October, it's based on when you receive the money, so December, January, February, March are the first four months that we've received sales tax for this fiscal year, and that, we're up 21.75%. So, a third of the way through the year, we were off to incredibly strong start, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any information on per capita sales numbers?
Sure, we do, I don't have it with me, but we have that. Yeah, be happy to.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, Chief Minton.
Good evening, I know those are always good numbers to see go up, and I'll be glad to show you some numbers that actually go down in our business. So, first of all, you should have up on the dais up there, I hope you guys got a copy of this, I know you may have gotten some already, but part of our report is just, we wanted to let you know, our annual report is out, and is completed, and after six years, this was kind of a vision that I've had, is that we actually were able to mail this out to our community, and the water bill, and a lot of people received it in the water bill, and if they didn't get a paper bill, then they get an electronic bill, they got a link to it as well. So, I know Lou's talked to some people as well, and I've talked to several people about some of the things they didn't know we did, and they were kind of excited to see this, and it stimulated a lot of great conversations within our community. But with the report that we have up there, just kind of a overview, is, you know, we always want to let people know kind of what we're doing, some of the highlights of the things that are going on within the department and the community, and then on the second page, just our structure and our overview, and then, of course, everybody likes to look at stats to kind of see what's going on in our community, and different perspectives as far as accidents, injuries, or types of crimes that are occurring in the city. Again, I know, you'll hear me say this a thousand, thousands, and thousands of times, it's, you know, we're so blessed that the amount of crime that's occurring in the city is relatively low for the amount of growth that the city is bringing, and that has a lot to do, not just with the police department and what they do on patrol and everything, but how the community doesn't want those things to happen, so they help us in preventing crime and keeping crime numbers down and low. So, I'm real excited that finally we can get this out to everyone. And in the second part, I guess we'll go to the next, is where I'll have Lou step in, so she can talk to you a bit about some recent numbers and things that have been going on for the last couple of years, so.
Okay, well, we're still doing the unified crime reporting, but we will be changing over to neighbors on April 9th, so that's coming really soon, but still, right here, what I have for you is three years' worth of the Part 1 crimes, so those more serious crimes. Now, I've got some, and I'm very sorry, it's very math-nerdy numbers after it, so I'm just going to kind of explain kind of how to look at it. So, if you're looking at a population of numbers, then your average is kind of what's in that middle, and your standard deviation talks about the spread from that average. So, to kind of look and see, is it significantly different, like, should we be worried, is something changing up or less? If you take that spread, the standard deviation, plus or minus two from that average, and then look at all those numbers, they all fall within it. So, what it means is it's a natural progression, there's always going to be changes within it, but it tells you there's nothing that's really jumping out at you and saying, oh, gosh, there's a pattern here, and we may need to look at it. Sometimes, there are good patterns too, with stuff reducing, but it can also be increasing, so, sorry for the math-nerdy numbers, but I just wanted to show you, that's how we actually judge the changes between them, and it's the same methodology we would use in any analysis that we do. And then here, these are, in the annual report, the numbers for the collisions. So, these are the collisions that are investigated. We get many, many more calls for collisions, and what I just wanted to show you all, is that these collisions are occurring all over the city. Okay? There's not a specific pattern to any of this. When we do get concerns from any particular area, we would go in and we would look, and again, sorry with the math-nerdiness, but we would look for a correlation of a day of week, a time of day, or anything else that might give us some indication that there's a specific pattern to it that we can then specifically address. And what I can tell you is, there's not. What I did want to show you on the next slide, is we do have in that annual report, the top 10 intersections for collisions, and the list is repeated here, but what I wanted to show you is the exact same data from the last slide, but shown in something that's called a heat graph. So, it kind of takes those clusters of more things, and then shows them, and the redder the color, the more that there is in that area, kind of surrounding it. And basically, what you can see from this is pretty much all the intersections, and that's kind of what we have on that. And then, on the last slide, just to go into a little bit further, hey, what do we do about it? Oh, my goodness, I know this looks really messy, but these are all our traffic stops, and again, they're just blanketing the city. Now, again, anytime there's a specific concern, we'll do an analysis to see if there's a correlation, to see something that we could do, and that could be anything, that could be lights, the sunlight interfering with light structure, anything like that, and there just hasn't been any. Yes?
Do we know, like, what time of day are the most accidents happening? Is it, you know what I mean?
I'm so excited that you would ask that.
Yes, she is.
I'm so sorry, total mystery.
We have till 1 o'clock, I mean.
So, I've actually looked at that, when we look at, when should we most deploy our officers, and there is no specific time of day. Now, when we have higher traffic congestion, there's always going to be more volume, so there are a little bit more, but it changes from which day of the week that you look at, and which location you're looking at. So, there really is no pattern, and I get really excited going and looking for them, but we just don't have any. So, to be very specific, when we first opened up Hero Way and the 183 access road, we had several bad collisions there, and that was really a difficult situation for everyone. There was no time of day or day of week that was specific to it, and that makes it very difficult for us to go and just do enforcement, so this blanket is about, we're here, we're out here, and we're here everywhere, because we want everyone to help us to keep everybody safe.
What about speed, you know, things like that?
Yeah, speed is always one of the top four.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Are most people alone, or do they have somebody in the car?
It would depend on which type of collision that you were talking about.
I'm nerdy about stuff, I'm sorry.
I get so excited about that. We do have, for the ones that we investigate, I'm sorry, for the ones that we do investigate, we do have a database that we can access, if there's some specific location that you are interested about, we can actually go in and look at the causes of the collisions that were included in the officers' reports, as well as how many people, and what types of vehicles are in there. But blanketing across the city, yeah, there's no, there's no.
Interesting.
I think it'd be interesting to send us the causes of these accidents.
Top four are kind of always consistent, speed, not using your turn signals, not disregarding stop signs, and red lights, that sort of thing.
Of those, are there any patterns where you tend to see sort of the same causes in the same areas? Like, on some of the longer roads, would you happen, you know, do you know if you happen to see more correlation of speeding there, or maybe on some of the smaller roads, more running a stop sign?
You know, it varies quite a bit, and it has to be very, very specific. One of the very cool things that I got to do was go to, is a new kind of enforcement philosophy, it's called D-DAX, and so it's a data-driven approach to looking at both your crime strategies as well as traffic. And in looking at that, I actually tried to look, not just all, if we could go back two slides, when you look at all the collisions, you don't really see anything, and then on the next slide, you see a heat map, but that includes everything, including non-injury collisions. When I looked at it for just the injury collisions and traffic fatalities, there was a new spot that popped up that never couldn't come through the data before, and it was actually 2243 in Ronald Reagan, and then shortly after I did that, we had that type of fatality north of there on there. So, that particular road is one that makes it a little difficult for enforcement, but it's one where I looked at the data in terms of, for the ones that we did cite, how fast were they going, and there were some pretty big numbers.
Is, thank you.
Is there any collaboration with, I guess it's Williamson County, specific to that road, to make, because Williamson County is also patrolling 2243?
Well, 2243 is even harder because of, there's no shoulders at all. Ronald Reagan's difficult enough, 2243, nothing specific popped up on the road, Ronald Reagan was the one that it actually popped up on, that particular intersection was just where it was. So, yeah, there's been nothing to drive in sort of concerted effort, but that's absolutely happened in the past, when it came to the traffic fatalities that were occurring on 1A3A, as we got north of our city, and we were part of a really big enforcement effort in that whole area with everyone else.
Great, thank you.
Guys have such great fun.
Yeah, and, you know, as you can see there, I mean, it's, we can either put officers where you think they need to be, or we can look at data and see where they really need to be. And one of the reasons, even with this map, when I first looked at it, I was like, that's like, blue everywhere, and she's like, well, and that kind of shows, because sometimes, I think some people think we just worry about one street over another, and you can kind of see it's, we're everywhere where there's issues, and we're trying to, you know, even some of the stats with the accidents and the injuries have gone down, but, you know, as we grow and our density gets larger, we're going to get, we know those numbers are going to go up, and with that, with the help of you guys, when we started our traffic enforcement team as well, they're the ones that go out and target these things specifically in these areas to kind of slow people down, and the deployment of the radar signs that we usually see around the city, putting those up, try to bring awareness, say, hey, we need people to slow down in these kind of areas, so. We're trying to play gotcha too much.
Right, because what I didn't mention before, Sue, anytime we do have an enforcement thing, we do, we always put it out on Facebook and Twitter, so that everyone's aware of any place that we're going, either because of concern, or because the data drives us out there, we always let people know.
Thank you.
Just looking at the numbers, it looks like motor vehicle theft and burglary almost cut in half from last year.
Yes.
That's amazing, congratulations and thank you.
Well, that's, I'll be, I said, it's a lot of awareness in just people doing this and locking the car.
Yes.
A locked car, it helps a lot, most of our vehicle burglaries are unlocked vehicles, so, just keep pushing that message out, and that's my PSA for now, lock your car, where you go, lock your car.
Well, the numbers show it, so thank you.
I appreciate, thank you.
What if you want it stolen?
Don't lock your car, don't lock your car.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Womack. By the way, under recognitions, I want to recognize John Cowman in the audience, our former mayor. Welcome, John.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this is the Water Supply and Use Update for February 2019. If you look at this first chart, you'll see that this graph or projection was performed by the LRA. This yellow line, just to the right, is the date of the projection, March 1st. If you look to the left, you'll see a year's worth of historical data on combined storage for both Lakes Travis and Buchanan. But a year ago, last, end of February, last March, you see combined storage here was 1.7, just over 1.7 million acre feet, and then throughout the year, end of the summer, a decrease until late summer, early fall, where with moderate rains, and then significantly more than moderate rains, the lakes became full again rapidly, and then, for the next several months, four and a half months, I think, the lakes have remained full, and as of the beginning of March 1st, combined storage, at the beginning, or the end of February, 1.965 million acre feet, or what is considered 97% full. To the right of the line, you see projections for six months out to September 2019, under various conditions from wet to extremely dry, but given the last few months, looks like that projecting out to September, combined storage will remain somewhere between the wet and the, I don't know, the wet and median conditions, 1.67 to 1.8 million acre feet. February, the inflows for February 2019 at 67,234 acre feet were 82% of the historical average, that's the first time since August that they were actually below the historical This next chart shows the daily water use for the City of Leander for February 2019, that's the blue line here, compared to February 2018, the red line, and then for reference, January of 2019, that's the green dash line, but you'll see the peak day for February was 6 million gallons, same oddly as January as well, 6 million gallons, compare that to the peak day of last February of 5.07 million gallons. For the month, the city used or produced 141.9 million gallons for February 2019, that's just under 26 million gallons more than the previous February. Peak days aren't really worth mentioning right now, that 6 million gallons, it's going to go up for the next five months. This next chart shows the connections for the city over the last several years, but if you look to the far right, you'll see here at the top, the dark blue bars are the total connections for February 2019, that number was 18,537 connections, of that total, about 94%, or, let's see, 17,510, I believe, of those were retail connections, the dark blue is the total, and the residential, and then further down, you'll see in red and orange, these other numbers, the red are the apartment units, that's a little bit different than connections, but that was 1,700, and I believe that's 92, right here, and then the commercial in orange, that number for, at the end of February, February was 626 connections, and if you compare all those numbers to the previous February, they all did increase. This last chart is a chart of the 12-month rolling averages, you see those rolling averages are the solid lines, if you look at the bottom, towards the bottom, you see the lighter blue line is for the BCRUA water treatment plant, and then the darker blue, or the navy, is for Sandy Creek, and then the two combined is represented by the solid orange line, and you'll see that at the end of February, the combined, or excuse me, the 12-month rolling average for February 2019 was 219 million gallons. Compare that to February 2018 of 186.1 million gallons, that's just under 33 million gallons more than a year ago. And then, those dash lines are the monthly numbers, and you can see the seasonal variation, the February's are typically the lowest months of the year, and then, as we go into spring and summer, they increase. But I didn't mention on this previous chart, but this, that peak day in February of 6 million gallons is actually less than the minimum of last August of 6.74 million gallons, so that just shows you the variations between a low February and a hot August. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on these charts.
Mr. Womack, can you go back to the rolling average page? I don't know, yep, I know the audience can't see this, but the last three months, doesn't it look like we've been using from water from the Brushy Creek Plant?
Just from Sandy Creek right now.
Right.
The Brushy Creek, the BCRUA plant has been shut down since December 1st for maintenance and repairs.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that.
I was out there today, and it's coming along nicely.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Excuse me. All right, at this time, we're going to move to our consent agenda, Council, hang on one second, item 12 is being pulled and considered separately. Hang on one second, item 12 is being pulled and considered separately, so this will be approval for six through 11.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Cannon with a second by Councilmember Shepherd. All in favor? That says unanimously. All right, item 12. Approval of the second reading of an ordinance regarding zoning case 19-C-002 to amend the current zoning of interim SFR-1-B, single-family rule to SFR-3-B, single-family rule and SFE-3-B, single-family estate on one parcel of land, approximately 77.96 acres in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcel R.032244, more commonly known as 600 County Road 267, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Welcome, Ms. Griffin.
The applicant has requested this item is postponed to April 18th.
I'll make a motion to postpone. Do I need a motion? To April the 18th?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to April 17? 18. Postponed till April 18th. Uh, we have a first and second, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously. All right, at this time, we're going to move to our public hearing. Number 13, conduct a public hearing regarding subdivision case 18-CP-013 to adopt the Hero Way Business Center Concept Plan on two parcels of land, approximately 15.60 acres in size, more particularly described by the Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcels, R.032149 and R.512383, generally located 625 feet to the west of the intersection of Hero Way West and Baghdad Road, on the south side of Hero Way West, Leander, Williamson County, Texas.
This is a, a public hearing for the Hero Way Business Center Concept Plan. The commission and council did review the zoning requests in the past year to approve the local office and general commercial districts. They have submitted a concept plan, and it meets all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So staff recommended approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval. I'll be available for questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. At this time, the public hearing is still open. I do not have anyone signed up to speak. Would anyone like to speak on this item? All right, we're going to move to close the public hearing, and we're going to move to discuss and consider action on subdivision case 18-CP-013.
My motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously, thank you. All right, we're going to move to number 14. Conduct a public hearing on the adoption of an ordinance amending, amending the project plan for the reinvestment zone, TERZ number one, City of Leander, Texas, to incorporate an increase in the project plan budget. Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of City Council. In January, the council voted to consider action on increasing the TERZ project plan budget by 20%. On Friday, March 8th, the TERZ, uh, considered that and voted unanimously to approve that, uh, increase in the project plan budget. Tonight, uh, it's action is a public hearing and then an ordinance to, uh, put that into effect. The initial project plan budget was 59,845,000. A 20% increase is 11,969,000, bringing the total to 71,814,000. Just a word that that does not create money. That just increases the capacity of the board to approve for, uh, future projects. The TERZ board voted at their meeting to not allocate that 11 point million within the various categories in the project plan. So that, um, could be done at a, a later action, which would then come back to the City Council. But tonight is a public hearing and then action on the increase.
All right, thank you, sir. The public hearing is still open. We do not have anybody signed up to speak. Would anybody like to speak on this item? Last chance. All right, we're going to close the public hearing. We're just going to discuss and consider action on an ordinance amending the TERZ project plan to incorporate an increase in the project plan budget.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
We have a motion approved by Councilmember Navarreddy with a second by Pro Tem Stevenson.
No, it's Shannon.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Shannon Shepherd. I did have a question of Mr. Powers. Now that you've sat down in your chair. So the TERZ board has not moved to extend the TERZ yet, correct?
Correct.
So, um, this is the 20% that, that can be raised by us alone, correct?
Yes, the interlocal agreement between the city and the county has a 20% provision in there.
Okay. Is there anything, and I know Mr. Cagle might be a better one to ask about this, but is there,
He usually is.
Is there anything, um, you know, scheduled to discuss that?
No, sir, that really, um, I, I believe at our last board meeting, Commissioner Long said, said she was working on discussing it with other, other commissioners. So, um, the, the council could take action to request the, the county to consider that.
Okay.
I think that, that's really a council action and not, not so much TERZ board action.
Okay. Okay, we'll bring that up in a future.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I had a few questions. Can I ask? Of the non-allocated funds, the new 11.9 that we received, what is the total now that is available for a new company to come in and request for reimbursement? I'm sure the numbers are in there, but I couldn't.
They are, but I can't read them, so let me. The, um, the un, the committed is 51,987.
I think it's about 32.
Pardon?
Is it, um, yeah, uh, you, go to the bottom of the second page. The uncommitted balance is 19,826. And then you would add 11,969 to that? Or is that inclusive of it? Nope, it's inclusive, my bad.
Yeah, the 19.8 million is un, un, or uncommitted.
Yes.
And, um, then there was an asterisk that said, "The current estimated debt service payments for the $15 million North Line City of Leander projects is less than 14 million by 2031." Can you help me out? What does that mean?
Uh, sure. The, uh, when the city issued the certificates of obligation for the debt, um, in, um, October of 2018, we issued debt for 20 years. The 20 years extends beyond the life of the TERZ. So, um, obviously, the, the TERZ cannot commit beyond its life. So what's represented in the project plan is just the city's debt service between now and the end of the TERZ, not the full 20 years that we have of debt.
Okay, so in layman's speak, are you saying that, um, for the, for the remainder of the TERZ, right now, it looks like we won't be repaid the $15 million?
Well.
It'll be something less than 14 million?
Yes.
Okay.
And the, this, the city's agreement with the, the TERZ is not just the 15 million, it's the debt service associated with that $15 million principal. So as those debt service payments occur between, uh, now and the end of the TERZ, 2031, subject to available revenue, obviously, the city would, would be repaid, um, up to what its current debt service is. And at this time, that estimate was less than 14 million. But the debt, we will continue to have debt payments to the year 2038. So that's another seven years beyond the life of the TERZ, so.
Okay, and do we know what the total amount, the principal and interest is that will be paid off at the end of the loan term?
Oh, in the, the full 20 years?
Yes. It's okay if you don't. I'll, I'll find you later and ask you.
Okay, yeah.
No problem, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Powers. All right, we're going to move to our regular agenda. Number 15, discuss and consider action on an award of solicitation, number S19-005, for traffic access management policy consulting services to Kimley Horn in the amount of $126,000, authorizing the city manager to execute any and all necessary contract documents.
Mayor and Council. Yeah, I'm sorry, while Ms. Simonson's coming up, I'll just, you all received an email from, uh, one of the applicants that, that was not chosen, and, um, they then chose to withdraw, but we'd be happy if you want to discuss that in great detail. I, I think they didn't understand when they looked at what's in your packet. That's a summary. We're well aware of everything that, uh, that they responded to. And we had, um, two outstanding applicants, but at, at the end of the day, you got to choose somebody. And, um, that's the recommendation that's in your packet. Ms. Simonson?
Indeed, are there any questions about the email received this week?
Lost my voice there for a second. That's why I don't sing. Is there any reason that they would have, I mean, like, gone out and did, I mean, is there anything in the process that would have led them to believe that maybe they weren't given a fair shot?
Absolutely not, and, and we can discuss this. Council's confidence in our evaluation process is extremely important. Certainly to me, the entire staff. We conduct every solicitation with the same process, the same release process, the same, uh, consensus committee scoring. Your scoring team in this case was, uh, your city manager, Mr. Cagle, city engineer, Wayne Watts, um, and your director of planning, Robin Griffin. Terry Crawford, your assistant city engineer, also attended our pre-solicitation meeting and sat in on the finalist interview with Kimley Horn. We had a lot of eyes on these responses, a lot of very qualified eyes. And, but we respect and understand that responding to any public work solicitation is, um, very time-consuming. It's expensive, it's emotional, people want this work, and we're happy about that. But, um, you know, from my standpoint, you, you do feel bad when someone perhaps takes away that, uh, we did not interpret what they presented correctly. And we've really drilled down on his five concerns, and, uh, his Houston work was recognized several times. The incorporation date of the Stevens Technical Firm and the kind of, the, the fledgling beginning that they're having there was taken into consideration against Kimley Horn's depth and breadth of staff. And the sample projects that we received in terms of evaluating their qualifications, the Kimley Horn team, uh, just outshone. And so our, our result is reflected in the matrix, and, um, we stand behind it. So given that, um, we did release this solicitation with the help of TechSTOD to, uh, 52 different engineering firms. Uh, we did have seven quality firms attend our pre-solicitation meeting. It was released during, um, the holiday season by necessity, which I, I think reflects, um, in our response. We got two responses back, but we are very happy that, um, our two quality responses were received and that, um, certainly Kimley Horn, um, put in. So with that, um, we have a scope of services and fee proposal from Kimley that we recommend, uh, this evening. Let's see, here we. The first two tasks address the council's core goal of developing a comprehensive traffic access management policy for the city and, uh, can be provided for a cost of $66,000. The third task would provide a comprehensive corridor mobility report on two existing arterial, arterial roadways at an additional cost of $60,000. Staff recommends contracting for all three tasks. However, um, the 126 total proposed fee exceeds our allocated budget of $107,000, $107,198. So an additional $18,802 would be required this evening, um, should all tasks be approved. We do have Kimley Horn here in the audience tonight. They do have a presentation prepared for you. And, um, we have Jeff Whitaker, a vice president with Kimley Horn. And you have Santiago.
Yes, Santiago Araki.
Super, thank you. If you're ready for that proposal.
Sure, thank you.
Super, thank you.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
This won't take two hours.
We tried, we're trying to get straight to the point, is it? Well, good evening, thank you for having us here. We passed out kind of a summary of what our qualifications were. This is kind of just a, a handout that we left behind, that you can kind of see what's put in our proposal, and we'll go walk through a little bit of it in our presentation. As mentioned, my name's Jeff Whitaker. I've been with Kimley Horn for 14 years. I'm a transportation engineer and tra, planner. And this is what I do on a daily basis. I, I predominantly serve municipalities, usually solving transportation problems. I also serve private developers on the same, in their transportation issues. With me is Santi, and he will be assisting me on this project. So when you're working on this project, we're the two faces that you're going to see most of the time. So really quickly, just briefly, why do we, why do we consider doing these type of policies? The first is, um, I couldn't probably have asked for a better lead into this with hearing the police, it's in the crash data that you've seen. They, you may see some similar slides in here. Uh, the first is, the first is to increase safety. We've been doing this, really the access management philosophy. Look at when TechSTOD started looking at it around 2004, and it was evolved into 2008. And a lot of the research was done starting around 2004, but it reduces crashes by about 50%. Capacity is increased, by capacity means how much volume can put, you push through a road. If you, if you're familiar with some old state highways, um, they're kind of built with roadways without medians, and a lot of traffic goes through. You've probably been driving down the outside lane, everyone's turning right, and you're like getting stuck behind them, or someone's turning left, you get slowed down by someone turning left. But it increases the capacity of that road by about 23% to 43%. It just keeps you in your own lane and it keeps you moving appropriately, which then again increases your travel time. Um, in some cities that we've looked at doing projects is that if you have a five, four-lane divided roadway that's well-accessed management and has adequate turn lanes and good intersections, you can produce the same amount of traffic on a seven-lane roadway that's not access management. So that kind of lines up with the 23% to 43% number. Why else would you do this? There are other benefits beyond traffic. Aesthetics, um, some people like trees, landscaping the medians. You know, if you're on the, on the, on the parkway, some landscaping the parkway, some sidewalk. Circulation, I mean, how many of y'all been at a restaurant and realize you want to go to the store down the street, and you have to get back on the road, and you can't actually get into cross-access? So that's another reason we look at doing this, is just really cross-access between developments. Also economics, it, it brings properties together and it allows for potentially better planned sites and just kind of brings the city together. So a little bit about Leander, y'all know this, y'all live this, experiencing tremendous growth. I mean, from 1980 to 2015, that's, that's a large growth. It's, I think it's one of the fastest-growing cities in, in Texas and in the U.S. Um, one of the things, your comprehensive plan actually made a recommendation to review the access management. So this is kind of an implementation of your current comprehensive plan that's going, that's currently on the books right now. Really, when we looked at our program, we tried to create a, a program of how we're going to do this process. And we came up with this, uh, these three, three Ps. There's the program component, what is access managed, what does that program look at? There's a partnership, this isn't a standalone project just with the city. This is the city, development, and other entities such as TechSTOD and the county in some cases. And then there's a process, and all those have to correspond together to meet objectives of access management. So I'm going to touch briefly on each of these projects. I'll start with program. One is improving safety. This intersection, this crash diagram, when you look at this, this is just the accidents that are called injuries. And actually, one of the intersections that was mentioned earlier on, on Ronald Reagan is actually the intersection that's in the middle that's highlighted. So that actually pops up on this map. When you start noticing, it's the nodes and it's the intersections and the access management hoes. But we can use the data-driven to determine where potentially the installation of a median or better cross-access or consolidations of driveways which would improve safety. Another one is arterial focus. That's where a lot of the, uh, access management is looked at to improve capacity and speed. As we mentioned earlier, you can improve capacity by As we mentioned earlier, you can improve capacity by twenty-three to forty-three percent and reduce travel time by forty to sixty percent. This is just an image of your current thoroughfare plan, and a lot of access management is really focused on the arterials. You don't necessarily focus on collectors and local streets because that's where people are supposed to be going, to access businesses and et cetera. It's focused on the arterials. Aesthetics, I mentioned aesthetics. If you look at these two pictures, both of these pictures, this is actually from your comp plan, these are pictures of access, two different developments on a very similar road. One of them has more sidewalks, trees, better opportunities for signage and wayfinding. You can look at the two, and most people, when they do a visual preference survey, they would pick the one on the right, which is access management. Probably no one sat there and said, hey, we're gonna do access management here. It's just that's a good example of access management. That's just an example of a project in your city currently right now. Here's a diagram that is in one of our programs that we've developed already, is just to explain what cross-access means. This is a development that has four properties, each with their own driveway. Well, you could eliminate two of those driveways, provide better sidewalks, better landscaping, and provide internal access circulation. And in some cases, some cities, when they have that internal access circulation, they can share parking. I mean, I think you've been to some developments that there's enough parking on one side and there's not on the other. It'd be nice to be able to connect the two and walk between the two as well.
I'm sorry, do you mind if I ask a question here?
Sure, go ahead.
So, looking at the one on the left, where, you know, there's no internal access, how would you solve that if only one of those properties is developing right now?
Well, you can do that in several ways. You can do a cross-access easement, and the important thing about having a policy in place is if they know that there's a cross-access and require they regrade their property to allow for that easement going, if one's developing, one's not, so you would stub it out to the property line, and when the other property develops, it would connect to that property line.
Does the first one that develops put in the driveway on their land, or would the spacing sometimes require them to put in the driveway on the parcel next to them?
It depends on a case-by-case basis, and sometimes it's how well the property owners talk to each other and they go. In some cases, they'll put it on the property line, some cases it's on their property. It really depends on how, on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
Doesn't that get harder to do if the property isn't owned by one developer?
It can be. One of the things that all access management properties is you have to provide access to a property. So, usually when we have a program in place, we usually try to make an attempt, and if a property owner's not willing to work with the other, we have to have a process where one property owner's not working with the other one. But a lot of times, in a lot of cases, if one property owner's willing to build a driveway, and then the other property owner's gonna get a quote-unquote "free driveway" on the property line, a lot of times they take advantage of that. When you sit down and talk to a property owner and say, hey, this developer's going to build a driveway, they're both gonna use it in the future, that saves them money for building a driveway in the future. We've had that in several instances.
Have you had a case where they weren't cooperating, and so somebody was allowed to put a driveway not where the master plan would've been, but temporarily until the rest of it developed?
Sure, we've had some temporary.
And had that one closed up afterwards.
I have a project up in the Metroplex that we had a temporary driveway put in with the understanding, when the next one, they would work together. So we've had, and those are usually aligned in the policy, how do you handle situations that may not happen? Or, you know, in some cases, it becomes a partnership at sometimes on us, you know. A lot of times, this is not just an access program for developments, it's also the access program for the city. So when the city's doing a project, they need to do the same thing that they expect the development to do. So in another city, where we had a city-led project, they were working with the development, and the development, in order to close the driveways, they had to repave the parking lot, redesign the parking lot, and put in some other things, but that specific development we were working with, they were really excited because even though they were losing one driveway, they were able to redo their whole property, and it circulated a lot better than before, and got some benefit from it, so.
So, I had a question. We currently, I believe it's in our ordinance, that we require future stubouts for where these access would eventually merge. What the problem we've had in the past is the first guy to develop then having to put the bill to, you know, purchase land and create a street, not just a driveway, through somebody else's property. Of course, the landowner who isn't having to pay anything, I'm sure they're fine and happy to do it, but the commercial business that has to go ahead and put front all of that development costs, we've seen businesses go elsewhere because of that, which is why we rolled back to where we are now.
Marcy, can you give us a specific example on that? Because I can't recall anywhere where somebody was, that scenario happened.
You wouldn't have seen it?
I said I haven't. I'm not sure. I'd like to know when that happened, because.
It's happened many times. Council would not have seen it because it would've stopped in the planning phase. So those options never would've come through. I personally have had several clients, and I'm sure it wouldn't take much for me to gather up some, but that was a clear complaint last year, especially during the election, when landowners were trying to sell their land, but this access management, where someone on the corner can't sell that land because whoever buys it has to build a four-hundred-foot internal road through somebody else's property.
Where was that at?
I'm not gonna throw any one particular landowner under the bus, but.
Well, you could give us a location without the landowner.
All around Leander, Crystal Falls, Hero Way, a lot of those parcels are only two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet wide, and so to have driveways six hundred feet apart would require that whoever's developing the first block there has to build that access drive.
Counsel, we'll let him finish, and then at the end, we'll ask you questions, if that's okay.
Another one is what, it's a lot about economics. I think a lot of, you think about what you'd like as a consumer. That's usually what we tell people, is like, let's not always make a policy just about access management. It comes in access management policy, but think what you like as a consumer, because that's typically what the developer would want to do, is thinking about the consumer. Predictable circulation, better flow within site, less conflicts. A lot of times, shared parking is a, and then I always say, pick your favorite locations. Think of where you like to shop. Don't think about access management, just think about where you like to shop, think about how you get there, and think if it fits kind of the access management thing we're talking about. I just put one of my favorite locations on here, and this was, I did the transportation planning for this site, and it meets most any criteria for any city that you would put for access management on there. It's a great site, it's the home of Anima Marcus, the Pinstripes, any of the type of developments you would look for. And this is just a site that, you know, has two, one full access meeting opening on the main street, and then two on the side street, and it functions very well, and it's probably one of the most successful ones right now, so.
Where is that located?
This is actually Clearford, in the city of Fullworth.
And was this all the same developer?
This was all the same, but it was two different developers partnered together, but yes, same property. Partnership with private, it's critical to partnership with both private developers and entities. I mean, that's what, part of the process that we'll show you in a minute is, we wanna make sure we understand the concerns that they're having so that we can put a policy, whether it's a temporary driveway policy, or whether it's a shared parking policy that we do, is really, we work on the private side quite a bit. I've done over five hundred traffic studies for the private developments, so I have a pretty good understanding of what the private development is looking for. Also, I've worked with TechDOT, so I understand what they do, and I understand why sometimes there's complaints from TechDOTs because of the variance procedures. There's a variance procedure, but they don't tell you how to get a variance. So I think it's very important, if you do a procedure, to make sure you have clear guidelines of when those are applicable, when those are not applicable. But just understanding what the concerns are, and that's the purpose of a policy, is to work through those processes and test it. Pick a few sites and say, if we have this policy, how would it affect? And that's part of the reasons we have the corridor studies in there, is we can actually look at real corridors that you have in the city and try to apply this policy. Not that they're gonna go out and do it on those streets, but we can understand what the impacts of those policies are. The process that we looked at, we put a five-step process in here. This is just something we've done in other cities. First, it's an evaluation. What's working today and what's not working today? So let's get a checklist of what's working today, then let's look at recommendations of what we're trying to achieve. Then after we look at those recommendations, we draft the development, and we stop there. We go through a concurrence process, which is really a stakeholder endorsement. We want, not everyone's gonna agree on every topic of it, but we wanna make sure everyone understands at least why we're doing it and have some sort of consensus on different things of the document. And then lastly, implementation, how does this actually really happen? So this is kind of our five-step process, and every step is really important. A lot of policies end at step three. They really don't go through that concurrence and testing phase before they get rolled out. So we're recommending, is let's get a draft development, and then really go through that concurrence and testing phase. Just wanted to give you brief examples of some places where I've done access management or access policies. Sometimes they're part of a larger sub-design document ordinance, but in Lubbock, we're currently working on their access management policy, and we really were partnering with city staff for strategies and tools. They had a lot of safety issues around the intersections, that was their main concern, and they had a lot of complaints about cross-access, of the developments happening and not going, not being able to get from one development to the other. So we were looking at policies from, and they also have, which is an issue, don't have as much in Leander, alley issues, where alleys were budding up right into principal arterials, and a lot of issues with alleys and side distances. And so we looked at raised medians, cross-access for corridors, and updated standards really towards access spacing and potentially turn lanes. One of the thoughts in Lubbock was that they had too many roads with too many lanes, and they wanted to kind of better access management with turn lanes to not spend as much upfront infrastructure on the facilities. So here was an example that's actually another thing that just kind of outlines where their concerns are. This is near an intersection with a lot of driveways. I turned left on Willis here today, and if you can imagine, if you're driving north and you're turning left on Willis and someone's turning south, that creates a pretty potential head-on collision. So that was really what Lubbock's concern was, those head-on collisions. They kept having serious head-on collisions. So they really wanted to solve, their access management was more about the intersections and less about after you got away from the intersections, so that's kind of where this one's focused on, the intersections. More closer to home, in Austin, they're going through an arterial program, and a lot of their arterial program is about cleaning up the access on their corridors. One of the ones that we're working on is East Riverside Drive Corridor Study. So we did similar to what we're proposing to do for task three of this project. We went through the Riverside Corridor, looked at every driveway, every property, and made recommendations on every driveway, whether it's to rebuild the driveway, relocate the driveway, and whatnot. And so that project's ongoing, but really it's part of a roadway design project, so this project's being implemented, and it's just an example of where we work with it, but I mean, it's meeting with every property owner and understanding what their needs are. In some cases, some of the property owners you meet with is they have a driveway, and you look out there, and there was one driveway in particular to the business, not one vehicle used it the entire time. And it was creating a bunch of headaches for the way the signal operated, and when we talked to the driver, he's like, yeah, you know what, I don't think anyone really uses that. That's a good idea. So sometimes we think they need it, and they actually don't. And in some cases, it surprises you. We have a gas station, sometimes they need it because they have to turn their big trucks, so we have to consider, you know, all types of users and all types of vehicles as well. So really, those are just two brief examples. We have more of them, but really, you know, this is really a partnership with, you know, us as helping facilitate the conversation between the city staff, developers, and us as a technical expertise in trying to formulate what's best for the city in the future. With that, I'll answer any more detailed questions.
I had a couple of questions for you. So have you looked at, are you, you're probably knowledgeable of the TechDOT plan, right? And the Austin plan, correct?
The Austin plan is being rewritten right now, but I am not.
Okay. So, have you reviewed our previous access management plan?
My understanding was that y'all adopted TechDOTs for a time period.
Well, very recently.
Very recently. That was what I looked at.
So, for a long time, we've been under a previous plan. That sounds a lot like what you showed. And one of the things is, and I need to remind everybody, that when we went through that process, we had a room packed full of people that gave examples over and over. I'm sure we still have the tapes, we can look at them, and talked about how they had businesses that were negatively affected. So, baggage roads, for instance, which I call store killers. But, the idea is that if you're going down an arterial, there's one entrance into a development. So, I'm not familiar with the city. I'm passing through. I see a Chili's, and I just pass the entrance. So I've gotta go up, do a U-turn, come back, hit the light again, do another U-turn to get in. Do I do it? Probably not, right?
Well, the statistics just shows, gas station and fast-food restaurants are the ones that are impacted mostly by that. Most of the other businesses, minimal impact of them.
So I probably would?
But if you're going to a Chili's and you pass it, you'll probably come back. But if you're going to like McDonald's, that's our fast-food restaurant. That's what the statistics show, but.
I'd love to see those, but, yeah. The feedback that we got when we had our public hearings was over and over again how negatively that kind of access management policy affected development. So the last thing we wanna do is go right back to what we just left. You know, I mean, I think, you know, for me, you know, I look at deceleration lanes. Fine, you know, you can incorporate those, but I don't know that I wanna see us go back to what we had before. And I just wanna make sure that that's not the plan, that that wasn't relayed somehow.
If you talk about deceleration lanes, who's gonna give the right way to do that?
I guess a developer, if you're developing the property. Obviously, that would be something where you'd have like a Lowe's-type development, you know. You know, that's one safety aspect that I think I would definitely support. But restricting access for business, I think, has gotten us to a place where a lot of people, including myself, feel like we have underperformed as far as commercial development. And I think our citizens have pretty much made that clear over and over again. So, the last thing we want is a return to what we had before. So, I would love to see some analysis of our former plan, because if it didn't work, why would we go back to the same thing?
You know, I'm not sure. This is what we're gonna develop with Kimley Horn. I can't even stretch it to say that this is gonna be exactly what we had before, because this is gonna be a new plan. I personally was with a group of ladies last night who live in my neighborhood, and they were concerned about the traffic in the city. They're like, my goodness, what's this gonna be like as we grow bigger? Because I'm already getting backed up on Lake Line. Lake Line's getting really bad. I think for the future citizens, we need to look to the future, and ten, twenty, even thirty years down the road, to see how we can develop our traffic plan so that we can reduce that problem. A lot of this is to keep the capacity at, the road capacity to be as large as possible, to keep the traffic flowing well. And I know that I've been going down Lake Line in Cedar Park, and it was irritating to constantly have to stop when people are making turns, and then they started putting in all the turn lanes, which really helped. Now that flow is going, and you don't have to slow down, you don't get backed up. I think that what we can do is to address concerns about access. I don't think that this is necessarily gonna reduce access. I think we can develop a plan that will be good for the future of Leander, the future of our citizens, because I think they're gonna get very aggravated if all these roads are backing up because we have too many curb cuts. And I think that we can work with them to also be flexible as it develops. For instance, when we were talking about that, the temporary one, having some temporary access to those. I think that we can work with it, and I think Kimley Horn, it sounds like this engineer here is understanding of that, and understanding of businesses. We can work with the businesses, and we can work and try to be flexible also. But I think we really need a study to see how we need to develop, and we can do it with a newer plan, and a better plan.
I guess I'm surprised that you didn't, that there wasn't an analysis of the plan that we've been in for, what, eight years, nine years? What was the previous one?
Five, I think.
No, not at all.
Okay, then how many?
Four or five years.
No, not that long. Probably two, somewhere in that neighborhood.
I think as we talk through this, the important thing to emphasize is that we are in a state of transition, and to approach this with that in mind. So the temporary driveways, the temporary curb cuts, I think is a compromise that would allow smart development so that we don't end up with, and I say this every time we talk about this project, but we aren't doing what Cedar Park is doing on Belt Boulevard and dumping a ton of money into redeveloping that because there are so many curb cuts and the traffic flow is terrible. So, there's no reason that we have to be extreme one way or the other, but I think the information that we could obtain from this study could help us make decisions that we could transition into and out of as we develop.
I think it's vital, especially if our community were due to build out at two hundred fifty thousand people, and with traffic counts now on certain arterials, you know, we're really, we're backing up, and we're just at sixty thousand, so I think your study is just vital. We need to be looking ahead at what that's gonna look like, you know, at two hundred fifty thousand, and how we're gonna be able to manage that flow.
I don't doubt, I know you guys and your reputation, you know what you're talking about. Our bigger, I'm sorry. My bigger concern is, some of the pictures you showed were from our comp plan. We're starting a whole review. We're starting a whole review of the comp plan this year. So, and I know part of what you're doing is looking at the actual, the access management. A lot of the concerns mentioned here also have to do with our roadways and how large they are and how we're building around our roadways to allow for future widening. A lot of those design issues are going to be addressed during the comprehensive plan update. So my concern would be maybe you guys don't completely understand what, because no one does yet, what is going to actually come out of the review. Some of the design within our nodes of pushing the buildings straight up to the road, you know, those things need to be discussed and talked about because then we can never widen the road without buying buildings. So I think we need a plan. My concern is that I think this might be a little bit premature. My other questions were on phase three. You are only going to focus on two arterials. Have you identified which arterials?
We have, we left it open. We looked at two of the larger arterials, Crystal Falls and Reagan, as kind of when we were scoping it out to make sure that we had adequate funds to look at arterials, but we were kind of leaving it through the process to make sure that those are the right two arterials that we focus on.
I feel like our comprehensive plan is more conceptual, and that it would be vital to take this information into account as part of that process rather than the other way around. How have you seen that done?
So Lubbock's probably the best example. Lubbock's comprehensive plan was ongoing at about the same time we were doing the access management. We were working on the comprehensive plan, transportation section. So we were kind of going in parallel, but we didn't finish it until the comprehensive plan was adopted to make sure that there was no thing. So we were right on the heels of it being adopted. We were able to basically roll out the access.
So is that ideal?
Hand in hand.
Or do you think we should hold off on doing this together?
I think sometimes going hand in hand or being a little bit ahead, we got some to present ideas, but they definitely need to correspond. If we need to, you know, if we put some recommendations in, we want to make sure they're not in conflict with the comprehensive plan, or vice versa, too, that this could help inform the comprehensive plan as well.
I guess that's what I don't understand is, you know, we keep bringing things forward, you know, whether it's parks, whether it's this, that all are going to have to do with our comprehensive plan that we're about to do. And it just, it seems confusing because we're spending a lot of money, a lot of taxpayer money, doing these sorts of things that should be part of a good comprehensive plan review. You know what I mean?
Well, I think like Lubbock, he just mentioned, they work hand in hand together at the same time, and being that we're doing the comp plan right now, I think that this is perfect timing.
We haven't started it.
Well, the comprehensive plan is a more general idea of what's going on, maybe even where we want roadways, but we already have a roadway plan, a transportation plan. This is a more detailed, and it seems to be pretty comprehensive, traffic analysis for existing and future scenarios, access management plan, and corridor safety analysis. These are things that we need and we should do regardless of when we do the comprehensive plan.
The very first picture we just saw, though, on this presentation, literally came from our comp plan. Like that drove part of this. So I don't know that, you know, the business necessarily has to come from.
I just don't, I don't understand, the pictures I'm looking at in here are the same pictures we looked at at our retreat, the same kind of, of, I guess, rationale for the system that we had in place, which again, the reason that we overturned it, A, was because it hinders economic development, and we sorely need that in this town. I just don't understand why we're going down the same store killer road.
I don't like the term store killer. I like the term smart planning, but that's beside the point. I think what Mr. Whitaker can offer is a look at what we have, where we're going, and all those things that were in the comp plan that you felt like were inappropriate or inconvenient or prohibiting development. One of the things that he pointed out was that we have a policy to address those, and that's a critical thing that we've been missing, is we need a stronger, clearer way to say, "If this, then these are your options." And as long as we have an ability to explore those and they're not a dead end, I think we're still making progress.
I'm sorry, Mr. Siler's got his hand up. I'm so sorry.
I guess we're not doing the hand raising thing anymore?
No.
It doesn't look that way.
He can't see me through you.
Sorry, I lean through. So I agree with a lot of stuff. I think y'all are a very reputable company. I loved the presentation that y'all did. I think the policy that y'all are going to put in place, or the recommendation y'all are going to put in place, is going to be great, but I think it's going to be eerily similar to what we had, and that was very contentious on council and in the public. And I'm afraid what we're going to do is we're going to hire y'all as experts in this, and then we're not going to listen to y'all. We're going to think that we know better. So I don't know how to resolve that. My question really is about task number three, like Ms. Cannon said. Can you explain a little bit more about what's involved in that and?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, just a little bit more on task three.
So task three is what we, the simple way to say is kind of a mini corridor study from transportation's standpoint. So we're going to look at kind of everything. What are your operations at those intersections? Are there improvements associated? What is your access management? Are there improvements associated with that? So it's really, if you will, a mini traffic study along that road when it needs to be done. So it is much about access management. We really wanted to dive into those two corridors we choose and really get into transportation, much like one of the councilwomen, I think, here said that traffic has become an issue, and see how we can resolve the issue on that corridor, of which applying the access management policy may be one of those solutions. So it's kind of more the implementation arm of the policy that we were developing.
Would 183 not be considered because it's a state road? And we wouldn't have as much jurisdiction over it, or?
It's likely the answer, but we did a corridor study on State Highway 5 through McKinnney.
Okay.
And we, you know, the city doesn't necessarily control to have it. It's always an option to tell.
So if we did that road, we'd take your recommendation and take the text stop and follow that fair.
One of our examples in the study was Preston Road through Frisco. They actually did an advance of development because they didn't want the southern half of Preston Road, did not have very good access management, and they wanted the northern half to have less issues. So they pre-proposed all the access points, all the median cuts of where they were going to be, and the benefits to the development community was twofold. One is they said, "Here's where it is. We can permanent through the city without going through text stop as long as you go where we show you're going to go because text stops approved this." Two is they gave the opportunity for the development community to build with the text stop contract, and it was significantly less because they were basically paying on a bigger project a smaller amount of dollars.
If we decided at some point, maybe we did task one and two and held off on three to see what one and two came back with, I mean, would that change the agreement or the contract?
No, we wouldn't bill until percent completed on that work, so.
What would be the harm in postponing this until we elect, until we find somebody to do our comp plan, and then look at their transportation part of the equation before we even, you know, start to look outside saying, I mean, I don't understand how we can say that a future comp plan's transportation wouldn't include a lot of this. I would hope we would pick a firm that they would do a good job in this. And it seems that if there was something after we did that that we recognized was, you know, a shortcoming, or, you know, it needed analysis, then we, after we do a comp plan or when we're in the middle of it, we can always choose to come back and...
Yeah, well, the thing, the response to that of a comp plan, typically what a comp plan will say looks at policy, and it would probably evaluate whether you need an access management policy or not. It probably wouldn't look at the details of what that policy is. So, I mean, that would be the question if you went through a comp plan, is it going to make the same recommendations as your previous comp plan of looking at access management or not?
Of course, we need, I would like to see our comp plan facilitator help guide you guys and what you're doing, as well as our transportation plan. One of the questions I had, Mr. Kegel, does the city have a priority list of transportation projects that are like in line, waiting to be done? Do we have a list from Public Works of the roads that don't have shoulders? Is there any organized methodology that we currently have?
We don't have a list of unfunded. So you've got your capital projects budget that has projects that are funded, but we don't have a priority list, no.
Okay, so to me, I would like to see from Public Works and maybe even working alongside the police department, a list of what roads we currently have that we know need attention and money versus spending money on another plan may be a bit premature.
So the, I guess the analysis that we heard earlier was that there were no roads that stuck out. They were uniform throughout the city. So hence then, why do we need two? You know what I mean? When they're all kind of universally spread out and they're all the same. You know what I mean?
But we have some roads, and I love data, too, so I could dig down in there. But we have roads right now that don't even have shoulder striping that are in poor shape that I'm, we need to have a list of priorities of those roads. I think that's, the taxpayers want to see where their money's going, and when they're on a road that is dangerous and 16, 18 feet wide, and it's been annexed for years and years, I think those are things that we need to know where those are in helping us build the transportation plan.
Well, Mr. Whitaker, in regards to that, would that be something that you would be doing in these reports, is recommending those sorts of items for roadways?
For this specific project, it's focused on access management and then specific details on select corridors that we select. And we can kind of look at your system and do kind of a quick process to figure out how to select those two corridors, and hopefully we can pick out the two priority ones. What she's referring to is more of a master project.
Yes, I think it's important to understand, access management's not talking about building roads, improving roads, widening roads. It's about access to the roads, especially where new development is concerned. So yes, we have a five-year CIP that you look at every year. We've got five years of projects, but we only approve one year at a time. And after that, they are, the unfunded ones are not prioritized, but we have, Public Works, engineering are well aware, we can bring you hundreds of millions of dollars of expenditures if you would like.
Yes, we would love that.
Yeah, I think it's important not to push off to the side maintaining the roads that we currently have. I, again, I believe what you're going to advise us is going to be useful and helpful. The comprehensive plan and things like the roundabouts and having buildings pushed right up to the edge of the road, those decisions, which are led by the comp plan, are going to dramatically affect your access management plan, correct?
There are some factors that could affect it.
Mr. Whitaker, I have a few questions. You gave us some examples of cities where you've done this before, and they were all very large cities. Is it common for cities our size, even with the growth, to have our own access management policy and not go with something like text stop?
Sure. I'm the city traffic engineer for the City of Burleson. It's 40,000 people, it's about your size, and they have an access management protocol embedded in their traffic study ordinance. So some cities do, most cities have some sort, it may not be a full-blown policy, but they have at least some requirements, and they have their subdivision ordinance or whatnot.
Do you know of any around us?
Santiago, you're aware of the, Round Rock, I believe, has some.
Mr. Watts did a survey.
Oh, wonderful.
Y'all did Frisco's traffic management plan, too, right?
We did, we did their comprehensive plan and their...
Well, the traffic management plan is different than the access management, correct? Okay, just want to be sure we're all talking about the same thing.
When was that Frisco plan?
Which one?
When was the one you did?
Well, we...
The access management?
The access management's embedded in their design standards, which was done, I believe, three years ago.
Okay. So they were probably 150,000 at the time? They're probably 220, 230 today?
It was an update to their current plan, so I think it was originally done in 2004, where there were 100,000 people at the time, or 80,000, so.
Sorry.
Surrounding cities access management guidelines, that was something you asked about at last council meeting. I was gone, I had left due to back pain issues. And you did get it in email on March 11th, but I'll repeat it here for you to remind you. Maynor and Jonestown both use Austin Transportation Criteria Manual. Cedar Park has their own access management standards, but they're mostly similar to the City of Austin Transportation Criteria Manual, according to Tom Gudala, their senior engineering associate for traffic in Cedar Park. Round Rock uses a text dot access management manual, so does Hutto. Georgetown gave us a response, but it didn't make a lot of sense, I'm not real sure what they do. And Flugerville, we did not get a response, but Flugerville has five vacancies out of 12 positions in their engineering department, so I guess maybe they might have been a little too busy to respond to us.
So out of all of our neighbors, the only ones who have something custom is Cedar Park, and even theirs is grossly similar to Austin's?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Not Austin's.
Text dot.
No, Cedar Park.
Cedar Park.
Cedar Park is quoting Tom Gudala, mostly similar to the City of Austin's, that's the quote.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Mr. Whitaker, besides the process for variances, what else sets your plans apart from text dot? I know that you said, you know, it increases safety, but there were, sorry, there were no real specifics on that or case studies about the safety increases.
There's, installing a raised median has proven the drop crashes about 50%.
Okay, and that wouldn't be in the text dot standards?
Well, the raised median concept is in the potential text dot standards, I mean, but it goes down to the installation of a raised median. When you actually look at the corridor studies, where do you install the raised median? Where's the incident? So those are the specific corridor studies. As far as the policy, you know, one of the things, looking at spacing, variances, cross access is technically actually not really in text stop's access management manual. They look at it because they say if you can't meet the spacing, to attempt to get cross access, but it's not actually called out in their access management policy.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, I go back to, I think this is premature. We should wait till we have a comp plan. So based on that, I'm going to make a motion that we delay this until we pick a comp plan and look at its transportation, and then look at different parts of the comp plan that maybe benefit from something like this, like you were talking about earlier.
I don't have a problem with delaying it, but I feel like we're talking about it because it was pushed as an issue that we needed to bring forward by the same people who are wanting to delay it now.
Well, I don't think we've been on the text dot plan long enough to know what the issues are, and we haven't really heard what the differences are tonight, you know?
What really disappoints me is that this was sent out to 50-something firms, and in the end, we have one that's in front of us, and not because, you know, through our own culling process, that's what was left, because that's all that has interest at this point. I would like to hear the theories, what you presented is very nice, but I would like to hear the theories from some other companies that are capable of doing this and what their beliefs are. And I'm also really disappointed that the previous policy was not given to you all in the process, to see if it looks like something you guys would have presented, because I agree with Councilman Siler, that based on what you've shown us, there's a very good chance that what we're going to spend money on and your time on is going to be something that we've already rejected up here. I think that it's prudent to wait and get more information.
Set a second.
I will second.
All right, we have a first and second, to delay till we get a comp plan and then try to formulate a policy altogether, much like you talked about doing. All in favor?
Sorry, but thank you.
All opposed? All right, motion passes six to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the next agenda item, Councilmember Cannon is going to recuse herself.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to 16, discuss and consider action on the second reading of an ordinance regarding zoning case 19-C-003 to amend the current zoning of interim SFR-1-B, single-family rural interim SFS-2-B, single-family suburban and LC-2-B, local commercial to LO-3-B, local office on four parcels of land, approximately 14.155 acres in size, more particularly describe by Williamson Central Appraisal District parcels R051458, R051458. R zero five one four five eight, R zero three one two oh two, R four three two seven seven seven, and R zero three one two zero three, more commonly known as ten eight fifty and ten eight eighty, East Crystal Falls Parkway. Anderson, Leander Williamson County, Texas. And Ms. Griffin.
I'd like to ask a question. Has the Conflict of Interest Form been filed yet with, with the city? Okay, thank you.
I mean, I think that's all we were waiting on this.
Oh, okay.
It was. I didn't see a copy of that, so I.
It was received today.
Today. It was received today, okay, thank you, Dara.
Is there any discussion?
Will that be sent out to council? Is that something that we could have a copy of? Thank you, ma'am.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Siler with the second by Pro Tem Stevenson. All in favor? All opposed? Passes six to nothing. All right, we'll wait for Ms. Cannon. All right, item seventeen, discuss and consider action on the first reading of an ordinance regarding zoning case eighteen dash Z dash zero three three to amend the current zoning of interim SFR dash one dash B, single-family rural to PUD, planning unit of development, with the base districts of SFS dash two dash B, single-family suburban SFU dash two dash A, single-family urban F, SFC dash two dash A, single-family compact LC dash two dash A, local commercial, and LO dash two dash A, local office, on five parcels of land approximately three hundred and seventeen point one-one-seven acres in size, more particularly described by Travis Central Appraisal District Parcels, three five four seven two seven and nine zero five two four five, and William- Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcels, R five six zero one eight four, R five six zero one eight five, and R five six zero four seven three, generally located to the northeast of the intersection of Mesa Vista Drive and County Road two eighty, Leander, Leander Williamson County, Texas, Travis County, Texas.
So this is the, the first reading of an ordinance for the Chapman Parks PUD. During the last meeting, the city council requested that the staff and developer work together to modify the language regarding the roads that access the property, as well as the language regarding the future Lakeline Boulevard connections from Greatwood. So up on the screen, this is the, the first part of the, the change that we were making. The PUD notes were updated to state that the development of Chapman Parks shall not start until two lanes of San Gabriel Parkway and Lakeline Boulevard have been extended to the boundary of the property, and CR two eighty shall be improved approximately two thousand feet east of the property, as shown in this exhibit. So the, um, extension of two eighty is this orange piece, Lakeline is the blue piece, and then the red piece is the San Gabriel Parkway extension, and that goes back to Baghdad Road. The next part of the, the proposed amendment addressed the concerns from the, the neighborhood regarding the connections. The red circles represent the connections in question. In the future, when Lakeline is built, the road would extend and connect at that location. The developer is proposing a traffic island that would make a right-in, right-out, um, turning pattern at that intersection. So this would make it more challenging to have cut through traffic through the Greatwood subdivision, so people would be encouraged to use the main streets. With that, the applicant also has a presentation they'd like to make.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Kevin Pierce, so I'm an attorney representing Catlin Land Investors. I just want to give you guys a brief overview, kind of, some of the big changes we made since the last time we were here, um, both a couple of weeks ago and several months ago, just to kind of give us a sense about where we've come from and where we are right now. One of the big issues that we had last time, um, we had this project before the council, was density issues. There was a lot of concern about, was this consistent with the area? Was this consistent with what Leander had planned for the, the city and for its growth? I know we've heard law about the comprehensive plan and changes that are going to be coming to it or potentially being looked at. At this time, the, the project that we have proposed here, um, we believe is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The area is a neighborhood residential area, which, um, calls for medium to denser housing, depending on the location of the area, if there are sewer facilities available, and its proximity to, um, a neighborhood center. And up at this particular corner right here is a neighborhood center as outlined in the comprehensive plan. And that area also has a limited commercial node. And this is to provide something for the community that makes sense for that area. Could be something like a daycare for families that live there, or a community theater, or a dentist's office, something that's not a massive commercial use, but something that is good and useful and helpful to a neighborhood. One of the other things we did is we reduced the maximum number of lots to, um, one thousand one hundred units. And that's, again, to address those concerns about packing a whole lot of units in a particular area. What we've also done is we removed some of the smaller lot types. We removed the SFL, the single-family limited, which were forty-one-foot lots. And we've also removed the single-family townhouse, the cottage housing, and the neighborhood residential, which allowed for multifamily use. So a- at this point, there is no multifamily, um, in this project. There will be no multifamily in this project, and that is consistent with the neighborhood, with the comprehensive plan as it stands today. We've also gone ahead and by taking away one of those smaller lots, we also added the seventy-foot lots, a little bit larger, a little more consistent with the area that is a little farther out from town, but it is still reasonable for the area, and we think flows a, a little bit better. The other big thing we heard from, um, our neighbors to the, the east and west was transition. How are we making sure that the, the transition between like the Greatwood neighborhood and the Mesa Ranch were consistent? And so, again, we've reduced that overall density on the project. We also heard from some of the neighbors in Greatwood that, hey, we don't want the back of our lot backing directly up to a whole bunch of backyards in this new development. And so to alleviate that, what we've done is we have aligned Lakeline Boulevard to the eastern edge of the profit, uh, to the eastern edge of the property as a buffer zone. And that's, we'll have trees on the sides to help create a, a little more of a, a segmentation between Greatwood and with Chapman Parks.
I'm sorry, you said just on the eastern side, not on the western?
The western side, well, there, there is no road to, on, on the western side, that, that cuts north-south. So what we had before in the project, if you recall, was Lakeline would weave in through the neighborhood, which would, um, push pieces up. But as it stands right now, if, um, we have the, these properties along here, which, um, back up to a few properties, and these properties here that would also back up to, um, properties over there. And, but there's not a, a specific roadway buffer that we could do in that particular situation.
But could you not put tree lines where those properties are on the southwest corner?
Certainly, and, and, and part of the, part of the improvements we're doing are the, the County Road two eighty between the, as it runs through our project, um, is developed out, it's widened, and it's also got buffer. There is no, um, houses fronting on those, on that street. But, you know, it makes sense to put trails and, I think, if I can double-check on the. It do- it does not back up to as many, um, houses as it does to Greatwood, and so there is not a, as much, but that is certainly something that we would, I, I think we'd be happy to do.
But it still backs up to houses, and they wanted to have the country experience and not look at backyards, so I think it would, it would be really wonderful, sorry, but go on.
I understand. One of the other things we wanted to make sure really stayed true to this project was kind of the cohesiveness and quality of the development in itself. It, it is still a master plan community. It is still organized as a series of interconnected villages that are a, a little more aesthetically pleasing than a cut-and-dry subdivision, where you have to count the number of garages to figure out which house is yours. We've got a mixture of housing types. We have the fifty, sixties, and seventy-foot lots, which, um, i- is one of the things that we can do with the PUD that is one of the, um, superior qualities, because it provides a mix of housing types, which allows for, um, a, a wider community to be able to live in this area. It's not just focused on one segment of the population. It's something where multiple people from different walks of life can, can be a part of that. We've also still committed to a three-minute walk to a public open space and to parks. We are committing a superior amount of parkland, um, in this project. And one thing that we've done on this project is all of the parkland is outside of FEMA floodplains. In, in some developments, you'll see a developer go, absolutely, we have a parkland. We've got this area here, and we put a, um, a soccer goal here and a soccer goal here. But if it rains, we really don't go in there because you're going to drown because it's a floodplain. That's, that's something we haven't done in this project. It's all, um, high-quality public space. And Rob did a great job of pointing out, um, the last thing we were here about was this, um, road alignment issue and, um, concerns from Greatwood specifically about people coming and driving through. So we've done this, uh, right-in, right-out traffic flow, which, uh, will allow Greatwood to actually still access that road and, and get to where they need to go, while still discouraging, um, traffic from Chapman for me able to cut through. Just making it discouraging to have to go up and down in the backup to try and get through the neighborhood, when it would just make more sense to stay out of Greatwood and, um, get to San Gabriel or to County Road two eighty.
Can you describe real quick on that slide how people, if they're coming from town, would have, if, if they wanted to get to Chapman, what different ways they can use to get to Chapman? And if they were to drive through Greatwood, what that would look like?
Uh, of, of course, so if we, let me, I think there's a better one. So down here is County Road two eighty. Up north is.
I can't remember what that's specific. Live Oak?
Live Oak. Live Oak is something else that is going to be developed out in the future, and so that'll, will serve people coming kind of from the north or leaving from the north to go around Greatwood. There'll be San Gabriel and Lakeline to the south. So you'll have really, at the end of the day, there will be three ways to get in. People will be able to cut south, come through County Road two eighty, not having to cut through Greatwood and go up because it's going to be just efficient to go County Road two eighty to Lakeline.
If I did cut through two eighty, what would, what would happen? Like, how would I get to, to Chapman if I was in County Road two eighty?
If you're in County Road two eighty, you're coming out from farther out to the, to the east. And it's simply you cut straight through, Greatwood's going to be on your right, you'll pass by your way path, then you'll come in and you'll be able to continue up to two eighty, two eighty through here, or take Lakeline up if you need to, uh, come in through, like, the neighborhood center first.
Sorry, so if I wa- if I was going through eighty and went into, uh, Greatwood, then I wanted to get to Chapman, what would that look like?
So if you, if you came through Greatwood, you cut up north, you would have to cut through, uh, a road over here, but then you're going to have to take a right and go up and back around to the top, or you're going to have to go back down and back through. And part of that is by offsetting those, um, roads, which is what we've done. It's a little hard to see, but, you know, the, the entrance to Chapman is here, and the entrance to Greatwood is here, so you can't cut straight across.
So I'd have to go all the way up to Live Oak?
Right, because it's a, because it's a right out, you have to take a right and then go up, and then, and then you back up here to cut through here, so it, it, it's. There may still be people who do cut through, um, you know, we, we, we can't put a hard barrier there for reasons we discussed last time. But this does, um, smooth traffic through and, um, should help discourage the large portion in, in a way that just, that's reasonable.
I have a question along the same lines, if you could please go back to the other slide you had? Thank you. So you've got eleven hundred homes coming in, and most of the development is north of two eighty. So two eighty, when you all, uh, work on that, are you widening it?
County Road two eighty, as it runs through the development, is going to be, um.
Not as it runs through, as it comes up to it.
Uh, to two thousand square feet, uh, the two thousand, um, feet, uh, as listed in section. Uh, section K one, um, addresses the improvements that would be done.
It doesn't, uh, address the width of that ru- that section?
Let me choose Charlie Fowler, he is our engineer with Santac on this.
Evening, council mayor. That two thousand-foot section would be upgraded to your collector class road, which it's designed for.
So how many lanes?
It's just two lanes.
It's, it would still just be two lanes?
That's correct.
So you have eleven hundred houses, probably one and a half, two cars per house, coming in, potentially on two eighty, that need to go north, and they're only going to have one lane for going straight and north? And we don't anticipate them going through Greatwood? East and west?
On County Road two eighty, or would they be coming in San Gabriel, Lakeline? And Live Oak eventually.
And how many lanes wide are you going to be building San Gabriel?
San Gabriel, we're building the first two lanes of the four-lane section.
So they'll also just have one lane there for going west?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's, I, I had a conversation with Mr. Montgomery, and he had talked about two options in regards to deterring entrance into Greatwood. One was a median on Lakeline, and the other was the right-in, right-out.
Yes.
For years, I drove a big old truck, and those things don't really slow you down, the right-in, right-out. So, um, is there a reason why you abandoned putting a median there on Lakeline?
Um, in, in discussions with city staff, this was the decision that, this was the option that we, we presented both options, and city staff was more supportive of the right-in, right-out solution.
Uh, I got to correct you on that.
I apologize.
We, we didn't, we asked you for your preference, we.
I, I, I apologize, that was, that was incorrect, I mean, and, I'm sorry about that. We think they're both viable options. You're right, there, there are some people who are, who are going to disobey the, the laws of traffic.
It's hard sometimes to know, you know, if there's just a little median when you're turning in and out. It's, it's kind of hard to know. If there's a median on Lakeline, obviously, you're not going to be crossing that. Well, a fellow curb hitter, yes. I just wondered why it wasn't, um, being addressed, that's all.
Understand. You know, ultimately, in the day, this is a, a project we think is consistent with the area. We've heard a, a lot of feedback from, um, city staff, from this council, from planning and zoning, from the neighbors. We've done our very best to integrate, uh, all the feedback we've gotten and, um, provide a project that we think is reasonable based on the information that we've gotten. And we think it is a high-quality project, and will continue to be a high-quality project as we continue forward. We are more than happy to answer any additional questions, um, this council might have, but.
I had.
Yes.
Another, um, where does the PUD discuss the completion of two eighty through the development from east to west? When, when is that addressed?
I was going to address.
Oh, okay.
If the right-in, right-out is something that the council doesn't like, we would put the median in there.
Thank you.
So that's, uh, uh, we had those two options, and we picked one, but I don't think we care whether it's a bump gate, or it's a median, or it's a right-in, right-out. We were trying to keep traffic from going in there. With respect to Honeywood, the offset, this, the, the roads and everything, they're internal or conceptual at this time.
Sure.
So we can easily put a road to the north, uh, in between Live Oak and Honeywood and Monty, and we, we can, well, our, our thought was to not, to offset those roads where you wouldn't have connectivity that would cause an opportunity to flow through there, so.
That's great.
We, we picked one, but I don't think we, we don't care which one it is that, that.
Okay.
Would suffice, so. Now, your question, your other question?
Yes. When, where does it specify in the PUD when you are going to complete two eighty from the east to the west through your development there?
I, I don't think we have a specific date. What we're going, we're going to bring, uh, to the southwest corner, southeast corner, and then we're going to go internal and do development. And whether we, we, we will improve two eighty, uh, when we get ready to do the development. And I don't know what front, timeframe it is, but we'll put in two eighty before we start.
So, yeah, my concern is the development on the west, trying to get through your, your section within your development of two eighty.
How, how does the, the traffic flow on the west side back through us?
Yes, sir.
We'll have to put a temporary street that, uh, will handle that, and we'll do it in phases, and, uh, that, that, we can't keep people from coming in and out, so we will handle that.
Sure.
And that'll be an, an engineering decision between staff and high-engineers. And that'll be an engineering decision between staff and engineers.
Okay.
Again, we're trying to work on zoning and not roads tonight necessarily. We want to put in 280. Do we want to put in?
Sure.
And ultimately, San Gabriel will be four lanes. It'll be four lanes out to 183. It's just when does traffic warrant is to, when that's going to happen.
And then just a wording, and I think this was maybe just an oversight, and you and I had talked about this, item K1 on page six, where it talks about development of this property shall commence until two lanes of San Gabriel Parkway and Lakeline Boulevard have been extended to the boundary of the property. I want to make sure that that section, Lakeline Boulevard, has been extended to the boundary of, Lakeline Boulevard shall be extended from San Gabriel north to the northern side of 280, not to your southeast corner. And you said that's already in your plan?
We will do that. I'm going to tell you that we're going to have to work with staff and our engineers to determine when we do streets and utilities on the south section. We may not want to put all the way up to 280 because we're not going to be using it, but we won't be able to sell lots until we get it up to there. And I'm not sure if you're asking specifically, will we do that before we start land development? And it will coincide with that. But there won't be any traffic going up to 280. We're trying to keep people from going up to 280 until we got developed.
And so it...
If we put it in today, people might start using it while we're trying to do development. If the staff wants us to do that, we will do that.
So my concern is you're spending a lot of money to bring Lakeline to the southern boundary of your development and then San Gabriel to Lakeline. But if you're developing, let's say you develop the southern parcel first, south of 280, how are those, those people aren't going to be able to use Lakeline unless you've put it in?
And this is ideally the first section?
Yes.
Utilities, wastewater needs to go to south, so we want to develop south to north.
Right. And the way the PUD is written, it says that you, you're going to build Lakeline to the southern boundary of your property, not to 280.
We can put it up to 280, but what I was worried about until I hit the staff and we get to the engineering is while we're doing land development, street facilities are going in, we may not want traffic going up to 280. They may want traffic going up to 280 before we start. And that's a question that we haven't addressed internally.
So maybe it's...
And not when we, staff is going to want us to finish that street. It won't make much difference one way or the other, but it could create a lot of traffic going back on before coming to 280 that doesn't need to be there.
Can I add to it? So again, and your question about 280 through the section. So again, we're trying to get two access points to start. So we will, you know, whether that is here and out as we develop that first phase, because we're agreeing to, we're going to have two off-site connections. And if our chief wants us to have two access points, so we will have to have a connection to 280 day one.
Right.
Whether that's a complete all, all of 280 through, or if it's just a piece for the first connection and back out.
Okay. Where's your second access point?
Lakeline.
At the southeastern corner that you're going to have a access, an entrance?
Yes. You would come to wherever, you know, the final plan has it, or this plan has it right here, but we would come up to that point. And more than likely, because this pond would have to be developed and that's, so that'd be plating. As we're plating, our intent was to build Lakeline as we're, the budding lots being platted. So that open space area and pond would be one of the first phases, if not the first phase, associated even with the southern piece.
So on the southeastern corner, just to clarify, because I can't see that far that well, are you saying that will be an access point?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, and to answer your question on 280, today it runs straight over and down.
Mm-hmm.
So phasing, you would leave that road open until we get this connection and you're only working that little small corner as a temporary access.
What we're sitting now today won't be touched and we'll put the building in.
Sure.
So there will be a point where there will be some temporary stuff there, but it won't be very long.
Great. Thank you.
Counsel, I do have a lot of people signed up to speak. At this time, I'm going to call David Hayek. If you don't mind giving me your name and address, you have three minutes.
Well, thank you, Mayor and the council, for the opportunity to address some points here on this project. My name is David Hayek, 2760 Council Springs Cove, and I live in Greatwood. This zoning change is a proposal to allow the development of this 1,100, I'll call it a high-density residential unit on 320 acres out, out in the north end. If you think about it, that's probably 2,500 to maybe 5,000 inhabitants when it gets finished. Maybe about 2,000 automobiles or vehicles out there. That could be about 4,000, 5,000 movements per day of vehicles moving somewhere. Currently, there's only one roadway in and out of that development. There's no infrastructure present to support it, you know, like sewers and gas, streets, power, water and gas. So a zoning change considers what's the impact of that zoning change to the area. This effectively is a small city that's being talked about. And you talk about the number of inhabitants and the movement of vehicles and all that. So I think what I'd like to ask you folks is to look at the environmental impact. Now, this is not the environmental impact on animals and aquatic life and all that that we hear a lot about, but listen to some of the points that I've got here that may tell you what the environmental impact is. What's the impact to the local area on all the sides? What's the impact to local residents' lifestyles? What's the impact to local residents' safety, especially in Greatwood? What's the impact to property values? What's the impact to traffic flow to and from the project and traffic from Vista Mesa? And then this, what's the impact on the new neighbors on the north end of this property and that development that aren't there yet? There was talk about this Lake, you know, Great Oaks or whatever, that, that street does not exist. And what is there now is a street similar to Greatwood. It's just got houses faced on it. So I wouldn't even consider it a north entrance. What's the impact to noise and lights in the area? What about water drainage and stormwater drainage? You're taking 317 acres and you're converting it from grassland to concrete, asphalt and roofs. Where's that water going to go? What's, is there any impact on Greatwood? Because we're sort of down the slope from there. What's the impact to city cost on this project? I mean, the developers say they're going to do this and do that and do that. Well, that's good if they're going to do it, but where's it going to hold them to do that? And what's the impact on future costs to the city, like maintenance of 280 and 279? And then how about the change of 280 that collaborative way? Who's going to pay for that? Because there's going to be traffic going through there, I can guarantee you. So what I suggest is the city council ask that for an environmental impact review of what is this total picture that's going here? And let the city staff take a look at that from their knowledge and everything.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Michael Shangrow, if I'm getting that right? Are you Karen McDonald?
I am. Michael has been our liaison all along, and he is out of town. He had composed a letter and he asked me to read it to the council.
Okay.
You okay? He says, "Dear Council, I cannot express my disappointment when I learned from the developer what city staff intended to recommend to council. All the extra time allotted and the best recommendation is to install right-turn-only intersections at the locations we've asked to have crash gates. To offer up a half-solution to the potential problem seems somewhat insulting. It may be a deterrent, but it will not prevent traffic from coming through in either, excuse me, either direction. I find it unfortunate that our former fire chief, Bill Gardner, has retired, as I can see the effects it has caused. It was through my conversation with him that led to Greatwood requesting crash gates for our neighborhood. Bill suggested that crash gates could be our solution, as the city has already set precedence in allowing other neighborhoods to install them. Now he's gone and no one's left willing to stand and do the right thing. Instead, they leave that up to you, our council, to show integrity. I have to express to all who would listen that this single issue was going to be a powder keg for my neighborhood. The safety of our children and residents from outside traffic created by Chapman Parks is paramount and the single most explosive topic. I never would have guessed that it would be staffed to ignite that fuse. I am having a hard time understanding how something so simple can be so complicated. We have a developer willing to install whatever apparatus the city would require to appease its residents, but instead, staff chose to throw that out with the trash and give a half-hearted plan that solves nothing in its place. Now, I'm sure 100 excuses can be generated for this plan, but I can generate 101 more of its failure. I plead to each and every one of you to simply do what is right. We should be allowed to protect the safety and the integrity of our neighborhood. If our request cannot be granted and this issue goes unresolved, and I ask another request of you, I ask for a resounding no to Chapman Parks. Our area of Leander simply cannot support such a development. Not only does it not fit with the area, but it would generate a traffic nightmare on roads ill-equipped to handle it. The safety of the residents in the area should and must come first. Please don't vote against your constituents. Vote against a needless development. Thank you, Michael Shangrow."
Thank you, Karen.
And I, I also have an email from another resident who couldn't be here. Should I go ahead and do it right now? Or call me later?
Okay.
And then I have a few things I'd like to say.
Oh, can I call you back up?
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you.
Philip McDonald, 2640 Council Springs Pass, approximately in the middle of Greatwood. I think I'm speaking for all of my neighbors in really asking you to think long and hard about this development. This Chapman Parks is actually a nice development in the wrong place. And it's in the wrong place because we are relatively isolated out there. And the, in fact, the average motor vehicle ownership in the United States is 2.3, according to Google, probably even a little higher in Texas. That turns out to be 2,500 cars when this is fully built out. The most, the most straight, direct route north and south is actually through Greatwood because we've got two streets, Council Springs Pass that I live on and Greatwood, that are basically straight north-south roads. And what's going to happen, if we don't have crash gates, is people are going to go up through our neighborhood and over. We already have construction traffic that travels at 50, 60 miles an hour up our streets. And it's going to be, when we have 2,500 cars next to us, it's going to be a much worse situation for us. And it is really a terrifying situation for the younger people in our neighborhood, like Mike, that have children that are outside and want to be playing. So we're, we're talking about a remote location, limited access. I, Live Oak was mentioned a number of times here a few minutes ago. The fact of the matter is that the developer has no money planned to build in, Live Oak, and the city has no money budgeted to build Live Oak. So there's not going to be any access on the north end. It's all from the south end. So it's going to be a lot of congestion, especially in the morning when people are trying to get to work or they're trying to get to school or elsewhere, and in the evening when they're trying to get home. And a lot of that congestion is going to go through Greatwood if we don't have our crash gates. But even if you don't consider Greatwood, you just write us off and decide that we don't care, we don't matter, the, the impact on the north side of Leander is going to be significant with all that traffic coming, trying to get down Baghdad or getting over to 183 or 183A. The logical thing to do is build this nice development near our major roads.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Kristen Palazzolo, did I get that right?
She's not here.
She's not here?
No.
Okay. She lodged her complaint against. Eric Load?
Code.
Code.
Yeah, I'm just loading notes.
Brian Malone?
Brian Malone, 2741 Greatell Pass. It's an interesting term, right-in, right-out, if we don't have our crash gates, because people will use that access to go right into Greatwood and right out to wherever they're going. I'm also an engineer and there is a routing protocol, OSPF, open shortest path first. Even if you have to take a couple of extra turns, if it's faster to cut through Greatwood, obviously, people are going to do that. We don't have sidewalks. We do have children. It's not safe. We don't have streetlights. We do have children. It's not safe. I've got a 19-month-old boy and I'll have another one in nine weeks. It won't be safe for him. I feel like we had almost this identical proposal a year ago, and it was voted against unanimously because it doesn't make sense for the area. We have five-acre lots over here. Greatwood is one acre and up. And then we're going to have a high-density development. That was, last time it was voted on, it was 1,200. It was dramatically reduced to 1,100. That's not very much. That's not much of a reduction. It didn't make sense before. It doesn't make sense now. If you look at the other houses in the area, it doesn't fit. I can imagine anything but a no tonight. And for the future residents of that area, it's a known issue. The siding on those houses are garbage. The developer's proposal, well, we'll have them repaint every few years. How much does it cost to repaint a house? Couple thousand dollars? What if they don't do it? We'll fine them. That seems unethical. I can't imagine voting to do something like that for our future residents. I hope that tonight, we just get another no. We can have another neighborhood go in that would fit. Cabayo Ranch is great. I would have no objection to something like Cabayo Ranch going in next to us, but this development doesn't fit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lisa Simmons?
Hi, thanks for letting me speak. My name is Lisa Simmons. I live at 2065 County Road 280. I guess I just wanted to make sure, I did talk before about the masonry wall on 280, and I had heard that it was said that we would get it, but I wanted to make sure that that's true, because I've been told other people say, no, we're not going to get that. I do, I am concerned about the transitioning of lots from, like, we have 10 acres, you know, we're right across from it. If a 50, 50-foot lots are there, there's really no transitioning at all. I don't like the hardy board. Everybody seems to think that hardy board is a bad option and won't stay maintained. As other people have said, they have only come down to make it 100 fewer homes than last time. And then last time it was decided it wasn't right for the area. So if we go that far, it is only 100 fewer homes that we're talking about. Already, if you're trying to leave in the morning or get home in the evening, San Gabriel to 183, it gets so backed up. You'll sit at that light and you're backed up to the next subdivision and you're just waiting. We add 1,100 more homes, how bad's it going to be then? And then I don't know when the plan is to actually widen San Gabriel. I'm not sure. I guess that's most of it. And also, the masonry wall would match the area. You know, when Greatwood came in, they did the masonry wall as well. I think that's about it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Joel Feldman does not wish to speak, but wants to lodge his vote against. Joel Feldman does not wish to speak, but wants to lodge his vote against. Rick Nessler also wants to lodge his vote against. Next is Lola Monahan.
He even asked my last name, right?
One out of 20. Same batting as last time.
That's really good. Thank you for the notes and the lobby side paper to write on. My name's Lola Monahan, and I live at 2661 Greatell Pass. 14 years ago, my husband and three kids moved to Texas. I called my mother-in-law and said, you should move here. Four years ago, she did. Eight months ago, we moved to Greatwood, and I called my mother-in-law and said, you should move to Greatwood. Four months ago, Gideon started building her new home. We are so excited. A month ago, I called and said, hey, guess what? We have to go to city council meeting to stand up for our neighborhood and our 30 mile-an-hour County Road 280. And so she's here tonight with me, which is great, because they're building 1,100 homes down the street from us. We already have traffic in Greatwood. We have lots of traffic. We have our neighborhood children out playing. We have kids riding bikes. We have dogs being walked. We have neighbors that are now friends crossing the street to visit, have dinner, borrow something, help with Christmas lights, prank a neighbor with a flamingo. We have great neighbors. We have a great little family organization there. I love the fact that our neighbors look out for each other. I think this alleviates the crime in our neighborhood. I can't imagine the traffic we will have driving through our neighborhood. It is not safe for our sprinklers. My husband's going to have a fit because we have no sidewalks, and those sprinklers are right there. And like you said, we all have those big trucks. No one's going to have sprinklers anymore. They will have no concern, these people driving through are not going to have safety or concerns for the safety of our children or for our grandparents, and I'm against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Melinda Monahan does not wish to speak, but welcome to Leander. Tammy and John Batella do not wish to speak, but are against. Kristi Horta does not wish to speak, but is against. Guys are really shy. I mean, it's not that bad. Harlan Herons, did I get that right? Does not wish to speak, but is against.
Finally got one that's not shy. My name is Mary Richardson, and I live at 2,500 Council Springs Pass in Greatwood. And, you know, I was thinking, as you all on the city council, you can kind of create Leander to be the city that you think it should be and that you want it to be and hope it to be. And the way my logical brain works is that you would have your larger home sites on the edge of the city, your acre lots. And then as you come in, you have your three-quarter and your half-acre lots. And then you keep on going, and once you get close to downtown, you have the urban area. And that's what this is. It's more of an urban-area-type home, and it just doesn't fit. It's like putting downtown in, out in the middle of nowhere, because that's where we are. And so I really have concerns, and many of you on the council have already addressed some of these questions to Chapman Parks people. You know, the proposal at Honeywood in Monty Ranch where there's the right turn only, we know that people are going to go over those barriers. They just will. And I was thinking about those 1,100 homes with over 2,000 cars leaving in the morning and going to work. And Lakeline's only going to be two lanes. That's not really enough to handle the traffic. So I know people are going to be finding a way to come through my neighborhood, and they'll be going right in front of my home, probably, you know, 200 to 500 cars in the morning and at night. And as we've already mentioned, our area just is not, you know, safe for that with the kids taking on rides on their bikes and people walking their dogs. And so the crash gates would be totally imperative if this neighborhood is going to go through. Even though San Gabriel and Lakeline Boulevards are going to be done, we know that a lot of traffic's going to go on 280. And they're going to improve part of 280, but not all of it. So does the city, is the city prepared to upgrade 280, which is already in disrepair? Have you done a traffic impact study, how it's going to, you know, handle all of the roads? And I guess the other thing I would ask is that, you know, again, stone masonry, not the hardy plank. But I just feel like all of you have come across where you're understanding that the traffic is just not going to be handled in that area. And so I would ask that you would all vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Kathy Hidalgo. I live at 2,700 Council Springs Cove in Greatwood. I ask you to vote no against the Chapman project, and this is why. Safety. The proposed solution to mitigate traffic that would flow into Greatwood, which is to make it challenging and to discourage the use of Greatwood, is unacceptable. The safety risks have not been resolved. Our neighborhood is relatively small and not designed for traffic to cut through our neighborhood. The high-density housing would guarantee this would happen. It's truly unreasonable to believe it would not happen nor believe right turns eliminate the risk. In fact, when I looked at this slide, CR 280 would probably feed the southern portion of Chapman's Park, and cutting through Greatwood for right turn access would then have the traffic flow into Chapman Projects on the north end. If our neighborhood was intended to serve other neighborhood needs, then it would have been part of the plan. It would have equipped with sidewalks, we'd have streetlights, and wider roads. I ask that you help keep the residents safe. Maintenance of CR 280. It's a road. It requires maintenance now, but is there funding? If it's unfunded now, will the city earmark funding to support the increased traffic use that will come from the Chapman Parks project? Or does it make sense for Chapman Parks to find another property to develop that is annexed appropriately, has the infrastructure in place, which doesn't become an additional expense to the city, and doesn't affect existing neighborhoods by using their streets as a fair fare which increases safety risk? Because of this, I ask all of you to vote no for this agenda item. One more thing, I'd like to acknowledge all the Greatwood residents that are here tonight. If they would please stand. We ask that you vote no. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Cal Richardson does not want to speak, but wants to lodge his vote against. Anna Bergeron, which I guess you're going to read.
She could not be here as well. I'm Karen McDonald, 2640 Council Springs Pass. And she sent me this email. She said, hello, I hope this email finds you well. My name is Anna Bergeron. My husband, daughter, and myself live at 2,600 Council Springs Pass in the Greatwood Estates neighborhood. I write to you today with hopes that our voices will be heard regarding the development of Chapman Parks. Our neighborhood is not built to sustain major through traffic, no sidewalks or streetlights. As it is with our neighborhood being currently under construction, we fight a daily battle to keep our children and pets safe just from all of the construction traffic. With an 1,100-home development coming into our west, it is imperative the Greatwood Estates not become an accessible cut-through to these new neighbors. Crash gates, continuation of property border walls, whatever the council deems reasonable to do that will keep traffic in Greatwood Estates limited to its residents only must be done. If our streets become an open cut-through option, I fear we will be losing our dream home and hard-earned investment. Our property value will suffer, our children's safety will be compromised, and we will be forced to find our safe haven elsewhere. Please heed to our concerns and vote no. Concerned residents Anna and Sidney Bergeron.
Karen, I also have your card if you want to.
Okay. Karen McDonald, 2640 Council Springs Pass. I spoke last time on February 21st, and I will reiterate that we moved here in May just last year so we could be close to our daughter. She lives in Steiner Ranch. We looked seriously there, but we wanted some elbow room, and we found what we consider our dream home and probably our last home. My concern is, again, the traffic and the congestion. As my husband and many others have said, I Googled as well, 2.3 cars per household in the United States to this date. The traffic is awful right now. When we're walking dogs, we have to literally get onto the grass because the construction cars and trucks are going through so fast. And that's just for the Greatwood homes that are being built. Chapman Park, 1,100 homes made of hardy board at a price of, and I'm quoting Mr. Montgomery, $375,000 to $500,000 for sale. We have homes that are five and a quarter, and we're on acre lots. And that's not going to happen. Access to our neighborhood is, I'm really concerned, because 280 was not mentioned the way it's mentioned tonight with regard to the pass-through and taking 2,000 feet and improving it. And basically, if you look at the map, it's right at the end of Greatwood. That, if any of you have driven 280, and I think probably most of you have, it's in disrepair. Patrick from the Street Department got one big pothole fixed for us, and within two days, it's back again and worse. And it's because of the traffic. And getting in and out, really, on, to take a right-hand turn on to Baghdad from 280, it's getting more and more difficult, and it's not just morning and evening rush hour. Children and pets, we have three dogs, but we don't have children at this point. But there are a lot of young families in that neighborhood with no streetlights, no curbs, no sidewalks. It's just not safe. And this is a fine development, but it's in the wrong place. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and council. I just want to say, I think that this is a great dynamic area. What you will have should be produced in Leander, but not on a place that has no access. And this has no access at all. There are no major roads that are near this. They're talking about just moving Lakeline, and I thought it was going to be all the way from Hero Way West, which is where it ends currently, so that they would have a way to get north and go into Hero Way West to go to the north side of town. But that's not what they're going to do. They're going to go to San Gabriel. It currently is without the 2,500 cars or whatever, even 1,000. It is not going to have the number, the ability to handle that kind of traffic. It just so happens, one thing that is on San Gabriel currently is the fire department's new building. So in other words, if we get back up on San Gabriel, what's going to also be affected? The fire department. If we look at that, that's a major issue. And that's one of the problems, because this is not being built on an access road. Now, the other problem is, you have 280. What they're talking about is connecting 280 to the street that runs in front of Tom Glenn High School. Now, if it does that, there also happens to be the bus depot that they're building. You are going to have huge amounts of traffic on two roads that will never be able to handle that kind of traffic. What is going to happen when people try to leave their house at 7:00, 8:00 in the morning and block all of the traffic going into the high school? Or go up to the other part and block the fire department? That's why I say this is a great development, just at the wrong place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Kathy Howell, and I live in the Pickle Mason House. And for all of the Greatwood neighbors, for y'all, I live on 2243. It's the little bitty old white house next to Sky. I have to put my blinker on to turn out of my driveway, just so y'all know what traffic really, really is. Okay. I served on the Comprehensive Plan Update Committee when we introduced the nodes. The intention of the nodes at that time was to have a buffer between the Greatwood neighborhood, which has larger lots, and, say, this type of community, which would be more of a starter home community. The node system that we recommended to the city to follow as the comprehensive plan was to have something less dense in the location that this neighborhood is being built. That was the intention. The intention would be for, say, this neighborhood would be built a little further out, not this close to the Greatwood neighborhood. That was the intention of the node system. Also, for this size development, the Comprehensive Plan Committee, we would have recommended that an elementary school be included, because this size development, those size lots, starter community, you're going to have young families. And this number of homes would be at least one, possibly two, elementary schools. There is no provisions for that. The intention of the comprehensive plan is that be included. Also, getting to the retail element, the whole goal of the retail element is so that when families come home, we are a bedroom community still. Even though we're growing rapidly, we still are a bedroom community. The whole goal is so that you don't have to leave your neighborhood to get groceries, possibly food, your laundry, or your dry cleaning, and you can get gas. The retail element for this particular development is a little too small to do that. It should be a little larger. And the comprehensive plan really calls to have a bit of a bigger buffer between, say, the Greatwood neighborhood size and something with this number of homes. There should be, it should be a lower density. That was the intention of the comprehensive plan when we did it. And I think that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Smith?
I'm one of the shy ones, but my wife is insisting that I read this letter I wrote. Steve Smith, 2740 Fishing Hole Cove, Greatwood. We recently moved to Greatwood after living in Austin for 23 years in a neighborhood much like the development being proposed at Chapman Parks. We enjoyed our time there and met many wonderful friends. Once our kids finally reached escape velocity, for the most part, my wife and I decided to back away from the chaos and craziness that Austin had become in those 23 years. When we moved, we didn't just move to Leander. We moved to the far northwest corner of Leander in order to seek out a quieter environment away from much of the traffic and congestion, one where we could afford to have some elbow room. Imagine our frustration when we found that there was a very good chance that the traffic, noise, and congestion would be following us to the country, dumping almost 10 times the number of houses right next door to Greatwood, along with the requisite, almost exponential growth in automobile and construction traffic. Apparently, we didn't move far enough north and far enough west. Now, having said all that, and as much as we love hearing the cattle and coyotes in the late afternoon and evening, we're not so naive as to believe that there won't be any development happening around us. We're just looking for the city of Leander to respect and protect the residents that have already chosen to live in that area and to put restrictions on the amount of housing being proposed for this development. It's already been mentioned that the council voted unanimously last year on a development of 1,200 homes, not 1,500 homes. So the reduction is only by 100 homes. So the reduction is only by 100 homes, which is not even the size of Greatwood. So my question for this council tonight is, what has significantly changed since last year, besides the meager reduction of the total number of homes being zoned to 1,100, to warrant, considering this proposal, again, given its unanimous defeat last year, and a minimum of concessions regarding density of homes to the neighborhoods being made by the developer? They're reducing the number of homes by less, I already mentioned that. Is the traffic impact, is almost identical to what it would be, it would have been last year. The load on the existing LISD schools is virtually the same, as was mentioned just now. Also worth noting is the reduction of the width of the proposed lake line extension from 90-foot, which is what I saw from last year, to what's on the table this year, which is 60-foot. If we're going to put that median on lake line, are we going to widen it a little bit more? So I don't think that anybody disagrees with Mr. Giddens when he says there probably won't be another Greatwood. But that's not what we're asking for. We're just asking for consideration for the neighborhoods that are already there, for the residents that are already Leander residents. And so, please, just consider that for this development or any other development that goes at this site. The density of homes and the access to our neighborhood, we just assume not have anybody go through that neighborhood for any reason. We don't want the turn-in at Honeywood. I don't know that you'll find anybody in the neighborhood that believes that. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Debbie Smith is, does not want to speak, but lodges her vote against. So that is it. Thank you very much. So with that, council?
I still feel the same way I felt about this project the last time we heard about it. I think it's a great project. I think there's some very redeeming qualities about it, but I think it's just not in the right location. So I'm sure we're going to have a lot of discussion about this, but I would like to just start out by saying I would like to motion to deny this.
A second.
All right, we have a motion to deny in a second. Is there any more discussion?
I've got a couple of questions. Mr. Kerr, our Assistant Chief Kerr, can you come up here? Can you talk a little bit about this crash gate idea and what that would entail and the pros and cons of it?
So from the fire department's perspective, we do not recommend a crash gate from the simple fact that it delays public safety response. When you consider that for every 60 seconds, if someone is in cardiac arrest, their chance of survival goes down 10 percent, and that for every three to four minutes, a fire doubles in size, getting to these gates, having to get out, stop, open the gates, get back in, delays our response, you can see where that can become critical. So from our perspective, we're not in favor of crash gates.
Do you know of any other public streets we have in Leander that have crash gates?
We have several streets that have crash gates.
Okay. Do you know which ones offhand?
Goodnight Trail, I believe, has one.
Public streets, though?
Public streets? No, no public streets.
No public streets.
How much of a delay does it cause?
Depends on the gate and depends on the response agency. For the fire department, we have NOCS keys, so we can get into just about any gate. You figure, on average, it takes maybe somewhere between 30 to 60 seconds to get to the gate. For EMS, they don't have NOCS keys, so they would have to go through dispatch, see if they have a gate code. If they did not have a gate code, they'd have to wait or contact us via radio. Police Department has that same thing. They don't have NOCS keys, so they'd have to contact their dispatch and get the gate codes.
And why doesn't EMS have the keys?
NOCS keys are specific to the fire department. So those NOCS, those NOCS keys are specific to our city only. So those EMS units, they would have to almost have 10 NOCS keys to respond throughout the county.
This may be a question for Ms. Griffin and Mr. Cagle, but if we were to put a crash gate on a public road, how would that work? Who would maintain it? If it's never, if we don't have it, we don't...
Well, what you're doing at that point, you're blocking a public road, so you're going to have to, essentially, you abandon the right-of-way to the adjacent property owners, and then it's no longer a public road, and it's gated or blocked off permanently.
But we didn't have that problem when we talked about the Crystal Springs issue.
Crystal Springs?
I don't, I don't think...
Maybe it wasn't... Treviso and...
No, the pond one. They were going to build the great big water thing, and it was over at 2243 and 183A.
Crystal Again?
That's the one, the Goon, thank you.
Right. I don't know that those, I think they were talking about private drives in that development.
No, we were talking about the public road. I remember, because I'm the one that brought it up, and I asked if we could do crash gates to keep the traffic from going into the neighborhood next door, because that was the big concern, was everybody was going to be driving into the residential area from all those big apartments. And I remember Chief Gardner saying, you know, we could do the crash gates and it would be fine. And nobody then talked about turning any roads into public, I mean, private.
I don't remember the specifics of that development. I won't argue with you.
And I don't mean it as an argument.
No, no, I mean, right.
It was something that we did just a few months ago, and it wasn't an issue then.
I think we would need to go back and look at the specifics.
That was in the Overlook Estates, right? Yeah, it was in Overlook Estates, private roads?
Well, it was into the apartments that are going in next to Overlook, and Overlook is not private. That's the whole issue.
No, we didn't allow the connection between Overlook. I think we allowed a walkway.
Right. There was no direct connection.
That's the one that's already built. But for the future development, what we agreed upon for their pod was to do crash gates.
There's, but there's, is this for Overlook then? Because we don't have...
No, there was no direct connection to Overlook. So I think Ms. Griffin's...
It was into the apartments to the south.
They were building a road to break the block, so it was going 2243, is it Reagan? What is the...
183A.
183A. And then they were building a public street around their perimeter, going east-west, and a public street going north-south.
Right.
So other streets could connect to it, but they didn't have a crash gate. It was a property to the south. When it developed, they were going to do pedestrian access to that cul-de-sac in Overlook Estates.
Yes, yeah.
But it wasn't a crash gate. It was just, we weren't requiring the street to extend. They were going to have pedestrian access.
Because they had other streets.
Well, we talked about here with Chief Gardner was a crash gate. And I remember, because it was the first time I ever heard of that. So it stands out. So that's interesting that it changed.
That just wasn't part of the pod notes that they were giving them.
That's interesting. Good to know. Thank you.
So we did talk to Chief Gardner tonight, and the last time this was brought up, and that was not his suggestion.
Okay.
On this specific instance. I'm not, I don't recall that one, so...
And I'd just like to, you know, I heard several people talk about the traffic issue there with the homes emptying onto the street. And regardless of how the vote goes tonight, I live in a subdivision, and how many, how many are in that section? It must be 2,000 homes right now, right? And Osage is the one that goes up.
Osage is a two-lane road.
It's a two-lane road. And just to calm the fears of a two-lane road not being able to handle that much traffic, we have a lot of traffic going down in our, through our neighborhood on Osage, and it seems to handle it just fine. So I'm not sure that that's going to be much of an issue, especially this far, far north. The other thing I want to, I want to look at, just to look at what's going on in that whole area there. If you look laterally off to the right, because we're talking about how far out we are and how the larger lots have been built up further out, but we also have some other subdivisions that are a little bit more compact. If you look laterally more to the east there, next to, just north of the high school, there's another subdivision where they have, it's a subdivision just like this one that's being proposed. There's also some coming to the south, some that are even more compact, a little further south. Now, I'm not exactly sure what's going to go in directly south from your subdivision, but I know there was talk about some more acre lots, maybe a regular subdivision. So I'm not sure what's been ironed out with that, with the rest of John Lloyd's property just to the south of this.
I think the zoning exists on that, correct?
And is it going to, is it going to be acre or...
It's zoned for acre.
It's zoned for acre, so right now it's acre-sized lots, so that's acre-sized. But the rest of it, I'm not sure if it's going to be the large type of lots like this, because we have a big demand for housing in the area. And all, mostly south of that, it's developing regular neighborhoods. It seems to be further north, there seems to be some larger lot neighborhoods. But I'm just saying that it's developing this way. This is how, how the demand has come into our, our area. And this is part of the demand of coming in. I'm not sure what's going to happen to, to the east. You know, there may be a proposal there. I don't know. I don't know. And, and I kind of wanted to address the, the subject of schools, because I do know for a fact that somebody is talking about putting a school in this subdivision. And there are talks like that going on. So there, there may be a school in here if, if it passes tonight. And there was something else, but I didn't put it in my notes, so I forgot. Anyway, that's just some of the commentary I wanted to make of what's actually going on in the area.
I think for me, Mary, you nailed it. And by the way, if you do comp plans, please let us know, because that was pretty awesome. But, you know, good planning is good planning. And again, it, it's a nice development, wrong location. So for that reason, I'm not going to support it.
Do we need to vote?
So we have a motion in a second to deny? All in favor? Thank you all for coming out. We appreciate the involvement.
Five minutes? Please? It isn't working. All right, okay. We go. Of course, we're also going to have, we're going to have this for a minute, too.
That's true.
No, it's not.
All right, let's take five. At this time, we're going to take a seven-minute break. We'll be back at 10 till.
Whoa, whoa, that was... I was not ready for that. Thanks.
All right, time to get back to it. The time is 8:56, and we are back in session. We're going to move to item 18. We're going to discuss and consider action on an ordinance amending portions of the Animal Control Ordinance, Chapter 2, relating to animal control, adopting animal control regulations designed to protect the public health and safety, providing for added and revised definitions, providing regulations and exceptions for online boarding and daycare services, regulating the confinement, breeding, and sale of animals, authorizing the investigation of animal welfare concern on private property, amending all parts of the ordinance in conflict, providing a severability and open meeting clauses, providing a savings clause, and providing for related manners. A lot of stuff there. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. What you have before you, and probably have it in your packet already, is the Animal Control Ordinance, plus we have kind of a breakdown of what the current ordinance was and what the amendment was made, to kind of make it a little bit easier to read than trying to have to read this thing over and over and over. So I don't know if there's any specific ones you may have questions on. I have Sergeant Wilcox who helped put all this together, and also Edna's here as well just to talk about if there's any specifics about any laws or anything that you'd like to, to know more about. So I'll pass it to you guys for questions, if you all have any.
I have a question. Section 2.07.031 is about modified registration. How often are we going to be required to register our microchipped pets? It doesn't have a time on it.
The registration is yearly.
Okay, so it will be annual?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, how, how are people reminded to do that? I mean, how can they register them? Online?
Don't let you talk about that, too.
We're not online as of yet. However, they're able to register at the police department. They provide the information and are able to register there for the information for the modified and then the information for a tagged registration. And events, yes. We also host two larger events, one in the spring, which will be in this April, and then we also have one in October. And during those events, we offer actually free registration to all attendees, and then we offer free microchips as well to assist them in registering their pets.
Great, thank you.
Can you, can you update? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're okay.
We talked about, I asked a few months ago, I don't remember when it was, but we talked a little bit about trying to make this process easier and to get more information for you guys. Do you want to give a quick little snapshot of what that was like? And it needs some funding.
It does need some funding. However, currently, the microchip companies, which, what you're referring to, okay, the microchip companies that I had contacted and that I was looking into, they're, I don't even know how to word it. It's more of they're wanting to go back to tagging every animal, where we're moving forward with looking at microchipping as a form of registration. So it's easier for us to return the pets to home, and my collar can fall off, tags can get lost, microchip is there as long as it's updated. And the companies so far that do the registration online are wanting to go back to tagging every single animal instead of doing the microchipping.
Well, that's odd.
Yes.
My dog has a long neck and ate his collar. Like, that is not going to happen in our house. But quick question, since he is microchipped, it's been a while since I've had to register him. Is it still the thing where we have to call y'all out to the police department, or is that easier now?
Actually, our records department assists us in registering if we're not available.
Awesome.
So they will be able to register there.
Okay. I always felt guilty. Thank you.
Yes.
I think these changes look great.
I have a question about, about the animal bites, because we have, I know we have a case in our neighborhood that there was a dog that would get out and was, had bit many people.
Yes.
And, and the owners did nothing about it. And I think people called, said they called in, and nothing was really done. The dog wasn't taken away, and the owners haven't been keeping it away from the public or from getting out. And, you know, I'm looking at Section 8, it's talking about animal bites and scratches, quarantine of animal, confinement of animal. And I'm wondering if, if when this is habitually happening, is there something that we can do? Because, you know, that apparently, even when they would go knock on the door, the owner, the owner apparently wouldn't answer and ignore them. So this is, this was, now, this was the complaints on Facebook, because somebody just posted it, and they said...
Maybe not official.
But I was reading, I was reading this, and I thought, this is interesting. So I, I'd like to at least address that, since we're talking about quarantine.
Can I speak to the statistics of that first? Whenever those kind of things can happen, if you could bring that to our attention, and me in particular, I can look through statistics on what calls we have actually received. And in that point, then, I would be able to tie if any citations were delivered or warnings were given to the people in those issues. Without something a little more specific in general, it becomes very difficult to speak to the issue, because obviously, it's very, very, very frustrating, but we want to be able to get to the heart of the matter on...
I'll find it.
Well, Shannon's much quicker about finding this than I am.
Yeah, so we're happy, we're happy to look that up and get that information back to you.
So my question is, with habitual offenders that aren't controlling their dogs and their animals are getting out and harming others, is there something that we do in that case? Is there something that we do to protect the public?
Again, I'll let her talk about this. I mean, we have, we have a very specific process that when an animal has bitten a person and is reported, it doesn't just get, that's why I'm curious more, because I hear about the bites and I see what they go through, the quarantine process, I mean, just everything. So, and especially if we have multiple bites, that, that dog would be deemed dangerous.
Dangerous. That's what I'm wondering, do they get taken away from them?
Maybe something was in, in that storm.
Yeah.
Other than quarantine, is, is there a process whereby we actually take the animal from them if they're not...
It would have to be seized, and then we would... The animal would have to be seized, and then we would have a 10-day, within 10 days, have a court hearing on whether the animal was deemed dangerous or not. If it's deemed dangerous, the, the judge does have different options as to whether even to allow the animal to stay in the city, to deem it dangerous and remove it from the city. It can stay, but there are requirements that are, that have to be met, insurance has, yes, it has to be registered as a dangerous animal, which is not the same registration, it's just a regular pet registration. And there's some other, the fencing requirements by the Health and Safety Code, there are different requirements for that. Now, if it's... Now, if it's, that's if the, the judge allows it to come back into the city. If not, it, they can allow it to be deemed dangerous, they'll deem it dangerous, but not allow it back in the city. It has to find, be rehomed. They can request for the animal to be euthanized, and then it can't, depending on the amount of time, whether it needs to be tested or not, if it didn't complete the quarantine period. But all animals that are involved in a breaking of the skin, that is either a scratch or a bite, are required to be placed in quarantine. And if we had, if the bites or scratches have been reported to us, then that animal has been placed in quarantine. That's something that we are very strict about, so...
Okay, so it hasn't been reported. Yeah, so, but if they, if whoever's been getting bitten, because a lot of people started coming out saying, I got bit, I got bit, I'm not sure if they reported it, but it would have to be an actual report to your department.
Yes, we would have to have something stating that it did bite or break skin, even if it scratched. I mean, if it jumped up and, and the paw scratched their arm, the pet would be in quarantine. It's a breaking of the skin.
But, but those aren't stated in this Section Eight, or Section two point oh seven, whatever, Section Eight of this, but is it someplace else in, in the ordinance?
Can I speak to this?
Okay.
Okay, so one of the difficulties that we have is with most of the state laws and city ordinances, it allows you to have both sets of things. The way the Health and Safety Code is written specifically in this section is that you have one or the other. You can't have a combination of them. So what we have is all the references in here to the state law, which is what she's referring to on that. So those are, those are state law requirements.
Okay, okay, so we will revert to the state law in accordance, when there's multiple bites, or something like that.
Yeah, a single bite even, we would revert to the state law and following all that. But that's why it's not explicitly restated in here, because then if anything happened with the state law, we wouldn't be in compliance with that.
And we have that with our charter, too, so that's kinda what we do, too.
Kinda on a side note, too, even if the, the bite occurred, but the, the victim, I guess, of the bite goes to a hospital and never calls the police department, and they say, hey, I got bit by a dog, the note, the hospitals is, is required to contact us to let us know that a bite's taken place. So sometimes we're not actually physically called by a bite, we're getting a reference from the hospital, so then we, then we respond and deal with that, even if it's in a different community, you know?
Any medical facility.
Or medical facility, yeah, I'm sorry.
So even if they went to the minor, minor emergency clinic or something like that, it would be reported?
Okay. I have a quick question, if I may. In my welcome to Leander packet when I was annexed, just kidding, nobody ever told me that I needed to have my dogs registered to y'all. How would a citizen know that? If they're moving here new, or no one's gonna get new, the annex now?
Yeah, and that's something definitely, like, even when we talked about the juvenile ordinance, is getting, getting that on Facebook. I know they do a lot with that on Facebook, and even, you know, there's something we can put out, even in our mailer if we need to, I mean, or get on that welcome letter. I know I did a welcome letter a long time ago when I started here. That's one thing we did for the police department, to let people know about what we did, but we can definitely look at that and see if there's a different way of getting that information out. And I know it's on our website and things like that, but you gotta draw people to that to see it, so...
I'll be sure to be in there.
Thank you. Yes, we'll be checking.
Quick question, going back to the, the microchipping issue, I saw that you all were requesting the change because of issues getting the information from the microchip companies. How does that process work? And how long is that taking? Are some better than others, or? I'm just, I'm fascinated, because I always thought it was just like a, you know, like, it's a good story, you just scan it, and it comes up, and you return the dog.
So all of our microchip scanners, when you scan the pet, a number will pop up, and depending on what type of number that is, whether it's all numbers or numbers and letters, or it starts with a nine-eight-two, or nine-eight-five, or et cetera, it depends on what microchip company it belongs to. So then, we find the microchip company, we contact the microchip company. I've been on hold before for an hour and fifteen minutes, waiting for them to answer to provide me information on the pet. If we have our own database with it, that's where the modified comes in, the modified registration, and all of our free microchipping clinics that we have, then that assists us in returning the pet home quicker, instead of waiting for an hour, hour and a half for them to let us know that, you know, the microchip belonged wherever it belonged to, whatever the pet goes to.
So when I register my dog, I'll bring in, like, the microchip paperwork, or is that how this works?
Yes, if you're, if you have a modified registration, you would provide that, that registration, that microchip number, and then that would be added to the, a form and with the record, and we would provide you a copy of it, and we would keep track of that microchip number as well. And then we would also provide you a company that you could update your microchip information for free. It's a nationwide company without having to pay a regular fee, because a lot of citizens, yes, have to pay every year, and it just makes it more simple for them to do it through a different company.
That's genius. Thank you very much.
Y'all don't microchip yourself, or can you?
We do microchip the animals, yes, ma'am.
Good, because my fellow's really old, and I don't have that paperwork.
No, but we can always scan. If someone does not know whether or not they have a microchip in their pet, we always scan the pets prior to microchipping them. And if they have a microchip and it's an older microchip, or they didn't even know that they had a microchip, we provide them the information so they can update it. Again, it would be a free update, and they wouldn't have to pay a regular fee, so...
It's pretty easy. I took, I took our big dog a few months ago, and getting her to stand still was the hardest part.
Right. Thank you.
One of the other things, too, just to mention, is some of the outside of our area that do microchip, the microchips come back to where they were adopted from, not the owners. And that's, that's very, very difficult, because at that point, then, you don't have any way to track them down. Just to add that.
Can you do teenage humans?
When Star Trek gets here, man.
I just, I just wanna clarify something also on the boarding apps and networks in Section two point zero eight, point zero zero six. I just wanna clarify and make sure that, that, that being neighborly isn't gonna be an issue with, with this ordinance, and I believe we, we talked about it ahead of time. Because my concern when reading this is, I know that this is to prevent businesses, but sometimes, you know, I've seen the requests go out, that can somebody take my dog while I'm gone for two weeks on vacation at their house, and, you know, I'll pay you. So, you know, some neighbor will say, yeah, I'll do that, or they have their kid, or my daughter, my daughter's taking care of the neighbor's dogs, too. And I just wanna, wanna make sure that that's not gonna prohibit that in this, with this, and that's kind of a casualty of creating a new ordinance.
Right. No, this is specifically addressing the mobile applications, you know, for boarding. In other words, they're, they're going through and creating a business in a, in a different way. And just to speak specifically to what you mentioned, if someone took that to that level, then yes, that would be prohibited, but if you're just watching a friend and family member, that is not what this is intended to address at all.
Okay, so that wouldn't, they wouldn't be called in and given a ticket for...
That's not the...
They're sitting the neighbor's dog, right?
No, that's not the intent, and, and none of this is intended to be outside of what we already have in ordinances regarding businesses in areas zoned residential. It's, it's really, really addressing this new mobile apps and making it very clear to our citizens, because there is a health risk to doing that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, this is a...
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Cannon with a second by Councilmember Sederquist. All in favor? This is unanimously. Thank you, guys. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna move to number nineteen, discussing and consider possible action on the amendment to Area Leander One LP TERS Development and Reimbursement Agreement with RB two seventy Partnership. Who's coming for it? Mr. Cagle.
Mayor and Council, this is an assignment. We've had a number of these. This one's a little different. This is the assignment of a reimbursement agreement. So RB two seventy is a landowner in the TOD, and they sold a portion of their property, but not all of it, to Alex Teinberg, and so this is splitting up that reimbursement agreement based on the, the division of the property.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Navarrete with a second by Protan.
Yes.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor? All right. This is unanimously. Thank you, sir. All right. Number twenty, convening to executive session pursuant to Section five-five-one oh seven-one, Texas Government Code, in Section one point oh five, disciplinary rules of professional conduct to receive legal advice from legal counsel about the social media policy and laws governing use of social media. The time is nine fifteen. We are in executive session. All right. The time is now nine fifty-seven, and the City Council is now reconvened into open session and will take action as determined appropriate in the City Council's discretion regarding the social media policy and use of social media.
Motion to take no action. Second.
All right. We have a first and second, all in favor? All right. This is unanimously. Closing statements.
Actually, I have none this evening. Thank you.
No comments. I'm happy that it's not ten o'clock and we're done.
Amen.
We better hurry.
I just, again, wanna thank our wonderful police department for these great statistics and making our city safe. Thank you.
I'm good tonight.
Okay, so earlier tonight, we had a proclamation for Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month, and as Mayor Hill said, I do have a bleeding disorder. And once upon a time, I woke up in an operating room, and there was a cooler of some stranger's